Call ourselves to order. It's 7:30. This is the March 26, 2015, meeting of the Situate Planning Board. I need a motion on the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda, public hearing, site plan administrative review, 85 Branch Street. I wonder if anybody's here for that. Introduce your team and tell us what you want to do.
Sure. My name is Conrad Elo with Odin's Elo Architecture. We're the design architects, the architects of record for the project. On my left is Ashley Gonzalez from my office, Odin's Elo Architecture, and Owen Wartella from Nitch Engineering is the civil engineer for the project. We also have Joe Sullivan here. He's the owner's project manager from Dataless Projects. And Jesse Finney, the library director, and I think there's the Beals, certainly one of the abutters is here as well. Who else can I introduce in the room?
Got a ball with John.
Oh, yes. Right. How are you?
I think we've got Hal coming in. So anyway. Off you go.
So, we're here to submit the Situate Town Library project for site plan approval. We submitted drawings, I think formally, to the planning board on March 12. About a week prior to that, we actually submitted an early advance set to the Design Review Committee, and we met with the Design Review Committee on the 12th. They have since published some meeting minutes with some recommendations, but generally, that meeting went well, and they were supportive of the design in place at the moment. We have, over the last couple of weeks, received comments from the planning board, and we've tried to address some of the comments that came up. And I can have Owen really speak to some of the, I'd say, the more major adjustments that we made for the fire chief, for example. Fire captain, I guess, had recommended a hydrant in a convenient location for life safety relative to the egress-ingress for the trucks. We've made, I think, most of the, if not all of the key adjustments, and we're here to answer any questions. I can talk a little bit more generally about the project if you'd like.
Why don't you give us like an overview?
Yeah, so this is a renovation addition of the existing Situate Town Library. It's existing, the existing building is about 25,000 square feet on two floors. The new library is 32,000 square feet on two floors. And it's, yeah, it's really, although a modest addition to this library, it's really a major transformation of the building on the inside. Right now, the library is primarily used on the upper floor. The lower floor is mostly used for storage, except for the community room that does serve a function downstairs. This new library will basically re-energize and activate that lower level. The teens and children's areas are on the lower level of the building. The adult areas are expanded on the upper floors. So it's a wholly new library, even though we're working within, really, the existing shell of the building. We've done a number of presentations, community presentations, presentations to the selectmen. I think, generally speaking, there's been nothing but positive feedback since we really began this design effort last August. So we're about, what is that, eight months into the design process. We have two more months of construction documents before it goes out for bidding end of May and shovels in the ground in July. And the hope is that you'll have a new library by September 2016. That's an overview.
Questions from the board?
Can you just point out where the square footage is being added?
Sure.
Make sure I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I don't know if you can see the small site plan. I can maybe open it up. But basically, we're adding on to the north and east faces of the existing library. So in the direction of Branch Street, the building is kind of angled to Branch Street, but it's growing towards, really, the ball fields on one side by about 15 feet. And then, straight out to Branch Street, it grows about 32 feet straightforward. It's still well within-
Sir, I'm looking at this, is it this piece up here?
That's correct. Yeah, it's a little, it's disguised in that it's really an elongation of that existing hip. So you don't really know that there's a distinct addition. It's just we're elongating that existing hip.
If you look at page C2.0, it's actually pretty good. You can see where the original roof-
It's bumped out.
Yeah, so a shallow bump out on the east facade and a-
So this right here?
Yes.
And then this piece?
Yes.
So closest to the Branch Street property line, the new corner is about 54 feet away from Branch Street. The setback in the front yard is 30 feet, so we're well in board of that. Parking lot is significant change in the parking lot. The existing lot accommodates 55 parking stalls. The new lot will be 106. That number comes from, in part, from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners requirements that want there be one parking spot for every 400 square feet of building area, not including handicap spots and staff spots. So if you do the calcs, I think we're obligated to provide 81 spots, and then adding on top of that handicap and staff. And the 106 number comes from that. The good news is that the existing lot is so inefficiently laid out that even though we're almost doubling the capacity of the lot, the actual boundaries of the lot are very similar to what you see there now. So it's just a much more efficient layout of the lot. I don't know if you want to talk about utilities or anything else, or-
I can. Does anybody have any questions about utilities, I guess? The biggest changes that were from the early set to today were we introduced a water loop for fire hydrant and for the water connections.
Yeah, I know Karen had mentioned that that was new pages that-
2.1?
C2.1.
Oh, that's right. That's why you said, okay.
So-
One drawing removed from the later.
So basically, the whole, the idea is that we are going to do a low-impact design type of, you know, best management practices of green infrastructure. We're going to use bioretention basins to filter and treat the storm water, and then we're going to connect it back out to Branch Street. We've created a, we're mitigating the site for storm water, so there'll be less volume, less peak flows going off the site, which is always a good thing. And with the use of the location of these bioretention basins, it's like a visual, you know, aspect of, you know, a green infrastructure. So, you know, people could see, oh, you know, we're doing sustainability on the site. We've introduced a hydrant.
Just so I understand it, did you increase the area that's draining? And then are somehow decreasing the actual storm water flow?
Well, the area is the same. We've increased the impervious area versus the pervious area. So therefore, you increase the runoff. And because of that, we've introduced bioretention basins in an underground stormwater retention area, and that'll recharge, you know, the groundwater and all that. So with the combination of both, we've actually decreased the volume going off for the two, the 10, the 25, and the 100-year storm events. And the two-year storm event, we've drastically reduced it by close to 30%. So it's, it should be a significant decrease in volume and peak runoff for the most common storm events.
Other questions?
We've also introduced, so basically, going off of the engineers' comments, we got a letter last night from the DPW that they said they wanted a hydrant. They wanted a RCP pipe instead of CPP pipe, and a few other minor things that you probably didn't catch. And that's it, basically. Do you have questions?
So those are, you're going to make all those adjustments then?
We've made those adjustments already.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, you don't have the latest round. But this drawing set in front of you here, which is submitted to the planning board, has picked up all of the requested changes.
Actually, a couple of things that were not included yet, but those are in the conditions. The DPW wanted some detail on the sewer pump that wasn't added. And then there was one other small item.
The detail for the sewer pump has not been added yet. I wanted to talk to Karen about that, because I think it's like the gatekeeper of all the, whatever the existing pump structure is. And we're just basically going to match that existing pump structure. We've talked with the DPW. We know that there are relatively new pumps in there, but they're going to be recycled back to the DPW. We're going to get a brand-new system, new structure. And it's just basically going to match the inverts that are existing. And I was waiting to get the detail from DPW to incorporate into ours. But it will be in the final set.
Okay, well, we have some, we have a condition to reference.
Sure, great.
And the existing gas main is okay, even with the increase?
So the area to- We're proposing a new gas main, new gas service line from the gas main in Branch Street.
Actually, I think all the utilities are new-
Correct.
Coming off of Branch Street. New electrical service, new water, new gas.
The electrical service is underground? How did, how did you manage sort of the multimodal thing and getting bike, you know, pedestrian traffic there and all that? Does that change at all?
Are you speaking of onsite or like offsite, like on the Branch Street?
No, just connecting this all in. Is there anything that's changing in terms of the kinds of access? Because you're redesigning the actual access way into the-
Yeah, the ingress-egress off of Branch Street remains where it is now. That's the same. I don't recall, does this walkway exist down to Branch Street? Is there a sidewalk that goes down? It does? Okay, then we're basically just resurfacing that. It doesn't change. We're tying into the existing walkway, which links back to the housing off the south side of the building. We are providing new bike racks. We are providing a convenience parking stall for book drop. So there's, that's actually an improved condition where one can drive up and stay in their car and drop the books off without having to get out of the car. So aside from that, all the walkways, bikes are similar, but improved, if anything.
Is there a bike rack?
There is a bike rack, yeah, new bike rack. Located, it's located up on the high part of the property-
On the south end.
Sort of, yeah, the south end of the run, the run of handicap parking stalls closest to the building. Sort of near the southeast corner, southwest corner of the building.
So how, what's the vehicle flow into this now? It almost looks like you're driving in and you're kind of running into a dead end.
If you look on the landscape sheet, I think it's-
Do you want to describe that then?
Now it's one-way and it's becoming two-way. So it's going to change a lot.
So you come in off of Branch Street, and to go back, you actually have to circle the parking lot? Is that right?
Yeah, I guess you could do like a three-point turn in there, over there.
Well, that's not preferred, right?
Basically, you have to loop it.
Depending on how many cars are parked. I mean, if there are no cars parked, you're going to just turn around.
Effectively, it's a loop. You come in, you go around the parking, then you-
Going around, all the way around the parking and back out.
But all the drivelanes, including the driveway coming in off of Branch Street, are two-way traffic. Designed for two-way.
The parking lot isn't always full now. And it's about half the size. So you're probably going to have cars parking in the part closest to the library. And then the ones in these bays-
Yeah, I was thinking more, I was thinking more about other, you know, like bicycle traffic coming in and that kind of stuff. And just, when you first look at it, it almost looks like you're just driving into a dead end here.
I'm going to park over here all the time.
You're going around the parking lot.
This just seems two-way traffic.
And there'll be a book drop right here. I believe that's where it is. And I just wanted to make a comment that Bob Vogel, Bill Lembacher, and myself were at the Design Review Committee. And they also talked about, like, when you mentioned, Steve, about pedestrians, there's actually a lot more outdoor space that can be used. There's an outdoor plaza. There's going to be, in the, this area here, a little area where you can walk out, have coffee. Well, they might, they actually mentioned a Keurig machine, so it could be, potentially.
Keep talking, Richard. You're doing a great job.
When it comes to restaurants or coffee shops, he's our expert.
I did have, actually, after the Design Review meeting, this is more of a comment. It's not a question. But Conrad had mentioned the idea of the central stairway and keeping that really open, the lantern, you know, the whole space being really open. And I think currently, right now, the railing for the second level looking to the first level is, were glass panels proposed? And I know that you had mentioned, I think, depending upon the cost, that could be potentially something else or a different material. Did you ever look at like a cable rail system?
Cable rail is difficult in a-
Code?
With code. It's a horizontal deployment of cables. Vertical, you probably could potentially do vertical cables, but horizontal, you don't want to create a ladder effect.
Theoretically, that's the problem.
Oh, with kids, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, I was just curious about that, because we were talking, and the discussion was about, how do you keep that space really open, right?
Yeah.
And that would certainly be something that you'd want to have, either glass panels-
Yeah, the glasses, that's really one of the main reasons, is to create more visual connections between the floors and to keep that as open as we can.
Okay.
And how did you, how did you address the lighting?
Site lighting?
Just, yeah, the site lighting. I'm really thinking probably more glare from the street and that kind of stuff.
This has come up in a couple of discussions. It came up in Design Review, and I believe it came up when we talked to the abutters. The site lighting is all new, just to start there. The current parking lot has a couple of almost like stadium lights. They're 25-foot-high posts with a kind of cross deployment of four lights on the top. And there are two big poles in the middle of the parking lot, and I think some other lower-level lighting around the perimeter. All of the new lights top out at 14 feet. They're all full cutoff, so all directed downward. There's no light trespass into the night skies. You can see the lights on a number of the plans. Certainly here on L5.0, they're shown. They kind of flank the, all of the parking stalls. They're also on, I don't know if they're called out specifically on one of those plans.
That's probably a good one.
L3.0. They're on all of the landscape drawings. The ones in the middle dogbone islands are actually double-headed. That's why it looks like two circles there, and then the ones on the perimeter are just a single, a single head.
The sort of dark stars, are those bollard lights along the pathways?
Correct. So then, so the lights in the parking lot proper are the 14-foot-high poles. The lights along the walkways are all low-level bollards. They top out at 42 inches, and they have a louvered lens. So again, it's cut off. You never really see directly into the lens. The only other new lighting on the outside is uplighting the current sign. The Situate Town Library sign that's along Branch Street that you see in the front yard will remain, and it'll be uplift. We've talked about putting that on a timer, and, you know, we're certainly open to any kind of controls that you might want to have on that in terms of, you know, when things dim down. And we, I would assume we can also control even the lighting in the parking lot to a certain degree. I know it's on a, it's on a light sensor, so it goes on and off based on the daylight. But we may even be able to control the time, although I would think from a public safety standpoint, you would probably want those on for a while. But we're open to, we're open to working with you if there's some specific lighting requirement you want to impose. On the inside, the building will be on a timer. So the lights will, certainly emergency lights will remain on, but after hours, the lights will dim down inside the library itself. But there is definitely more glazing in the library than is there now. So there will be some borrowed light coming out of the building. There are shades, for example, in the lower level, sort of in the front of the building facing Branch Street. It's the community room, and those have some windows facing out onto that front lawn. That all has a motorized shade system, so there's some level of control there.
I'm good for now. Sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Stick your head. Ask a question.
Well, just real quickly on the lighting. You said that there was no new lighting on the exterior except for the lighting the sign, backlighting or uplighting the sign. What about the, there were panels that you said potentially could be like banners?
Yes.
What about some uplighting for that?
Yeah. Do we have, we do have a couple. I probably misspoke. We do have some new lighting on the building outside. I think we have for emergency, we have some wall-mounted lights at each of the egress doors coming out of the building. But those are on, those are emergency lights. I don't think those would be on all the time. But your question about the banner, there is a, it's on our exterior elevations. I guess this would be- A 3- A 3.2. Yeah, so the front facade facing the parking lot, you'll see the exterior elevation A3.2. Just to the left of the main entrance, which remains where it is today, is a brick panel. It's an existing part of the building that we've proposed pin-mounted letters on that wall. And then immediately to the left of that library sign is a wood panel, which we think is a great opportunity if the library was doing a special event and they wanted to hang, mount a banner onto that, onto that surface. And I think that's what, Richard, you're referring to. And we did talk about maybe doing a soft uplight of that from the ground. We had talked at one point about putting some soffit lights in, but the soffit is so shallow that that wouldn't really be, that wouldn't really work. So this would have to be ground-mounted uplights onto that surface, which is, which makes sense and probably is a good thing to have.
I had a couple of thoughts on the lighting I just wanted to mention. That existing sign that they have, I think, might be kind of a hard sign to light because it's kind of a long, it's maybe like a yard long or so, and it's maybe, I don't know. I don't think it's, you know, much more than maybe eight inches-
Tall, yeah.
So it's kind of a long, narrow sign. I don't know how you can really light that very easily, but-
Was this your, was this a request by the library to light it? I'm trying to remember where we decided how-
We've just gotten a lot of feedback that the sign is almost impossible to see from the streets, so trying to find a way to light it was-
Yeah, there are three ground-mounted lights per side, so it's not one light that's lighting it. So that takes into consideration the fact that it's long and horizontal.
The other thing I was wondering is if there had been any discussion with the DPW or the town administrator about adding, you know, quite a bit of lighting? Because this is a town where, not recently, but in prior years, streetlights were not replaced and other lighting was not, you know, was not really maintained. And I think part of the reason was the state electricity. So not that that's a great, you know, thing for us to have to do, but I just wondered if the cost had been estimated and looked into the budget somewhere.
Are they LEDs?
Yeah, that would take care of that problem very nicely.
They are LEDs, yeah.
Going back to L3.0 and your parking, I have a little bit of a concern in terms of pedestrian access, especially with two-way traffic, children being picked up, children being dropped off, that I'm wondering if these islands are a little bit too wide? Or would it be better to have the two-way traffic, but have a one-way in the first bay, a one-way, and then a one-way into the second bay, and then they all come out and go down? So that it's one-way in front of the building? Because you have your handicap parking, but the sidewalk is on the other side of the cars. I just have this thing about sidewalks and accessibility. The only crosswalk is the one down by the first handicap parking that goes into the sidewalk. There's no other crosswalks.
Right, and that's really to, for two reasons, to have the one that is serving those lower handicap spots. I'll just point out that those four handicap spots that you're referring to and that link to this crosswalk are down at a lower elevation, and they really serve that, that community room. If there were an after-hours event, it would, it would, it would be good to have handicap-accessible spaces near that entrance.
I understand that, and that's not what I'm talking about.
No, I understand, but let me keep going. So that, those spaces serve that lower community room, but this crosswalk allows also for some visual slowdown point as people are coming into the parking lot. So that's, that's why that one was really an important one to have come fully across. The other handicap spots can feed into the walkway that's near the front door. There are no other crosswalks, you're right, into the rest of the lot, and so people just move into the lot. I appreciate what you're saying about the two-way traffic in front of the front entrance, but it's very hard to delineate walkways to every single parking spot in the lot.
I understand that, but there is no real walkway per se with two-way traffic on these three bays. And I'm wondering if, again, if people come up and take a right into the first bay, and then take a left and go all the way down, they're doing a loop, come up to the second bay, one-way, do the loop, and out. And that somewhere in here, there should be some type of a pedestrian crosswalk so that people will stop. Granted, people, most of the time, pay attention, but often they don't. And it is a concern of mine that having people walk directly into a two-way traffic, I have difficulty with. That's just my thing.
Yeah, that's how it works now, though, isn't it?
No, that is not how it works.
So one-way?
No, but I'm just saying people walk out into the parking lot. They walk across drivelanes. Whether it's one-way or not, it's, you're walking out of the parking lot.
But they can walk across to a path that goes across to the back.
Now, but eventually, you have to get to your car by crossing a driveline.
I understand that, but when you cross from the current library now, you know, a lot of us just sort of walk along the side. But there is a memorial park that has a walkway through it that is almost directly opposite the walkway from the main door of the library. So that if you have a bunch of little kids and you've parked out in the back, you can hang on to them.
What do you think? Do you have any thoughts about that?
I think when you create a sidewalk, you have to create an ADA. And I think the site poses a lot of challenges to creating a sidewalk with the number of spots and acquiring it. You have to remember that these are kind of like all, these parking bays are kind of like staggered, like one, two, three. So there's a significant drop, like about five or six feet between this level and this level, and this level and this level. So, you know, putting a sidewalk in there is going to either push back down closer to the abutters, or you're just going to lose a whole row of parking spaces.
Short of putting in a sidewalk, would you consider making them one-way?
Yeah, that was more what I was wondering.
And that's really what I was driving at.
I mean, there are a couple of things we could do. Maybe, I defer to Owen on the one-way, two-way thing. But we could also consider this paving, maybe crossing over that- that, that run of street, just to, just as a visual slowdown, again, for vehicles in that area. But it's a little bit tricky because it goes to, you know, the middle of a driveline, so it's tough to.
I just think that these islands, compared to, if you have two-way traffic coming out to go, they can go right or left, it's just very narrow. It just strikes me as rather narrow.
At any given point, that's going to be two-way, no matter what happens.
Right, but.
Do you need those islands at all?
Yeah.
But again, if it's.
I mean, if there was not an island, you could probably put a retaining wall, but I mean, there's definitely, there's a separation of elevation. So I mean, you're talking about, you know, six feet.
Plus, there's a requirement for trees to be planted internally, I believe, for so many, so many spaces equals one tree.
But I think that if you made it one-way on the first bay, one-way on the second bay, so you could basically two-way traffic right to the main entrance, and then one-way going toward the building from the top bay, and then down.
Are the islands wide enough to have any kind of a walking path in the middle, or is the elevation drop too great?
That's what we're saying, yeah, I think.
Well, if you go, if you go down to one lane, you could actually make the, the spaces between the two bays narrower. No, you can't.
No, you've got to have a knockout.
I don't understand how you're going down to one, one lane. What are you talking about?
Oh, if you made it one-way.
This right now is two-way, so the cars can, you can drive all the way here.
Yeah, that's the only thing, but it would still be 24.
But at least it'd be one-way.
Yeah, the only way, you just have a whole bunch of signage then, so it's like this is one-way, directed at half.
Right, you have to kind of see people.
Would you have enough room? You'd have to move the whole agglomeration down towards Branch Street five feet, but it seems to me you might develop a sidewalk that flanked the southern perimeter of the parking lot, and extend the sidewalk that goes right now to those spaces, the handicap spaces on the northern perimeter. And at least then you would have two, and actually maybe even three, depending on how you were traveling, rows of parking that were directly accessible to a sidewalk that led directly to the walkway system in front of the library. So from those two entire rows of parking, you could get to the library pretty easily without conflicting with any traffic that was coming. Yeah, you'd still have the crossing at the Branch Street entrance, but, you know, that's pretty well handled by materials and maybe some elevation change. And you'd sort of replicate that on the southern side, and that would lead directly.
I think the lines that people.
Yeah.
I think you'd be building a sidewalk that.
Nobody uses.
Right, because you'd walk in the road anyway.
If you park here, your path of least resistance is that way, and that's.
Well, I'm saying, you know, you'd, you'd end up only servicing these, these bays. You wouldn't be servicing the center bays.
Which you could possibly, excuse me, Anne, but what you could possibly do is just come back and just stripe it so that you know that there's a, there's a walkway. I mean, that would be my, my first thinking would be, I'd stripe it, and then if that doesn't seem to work, then I'd come back up and then I'd rub the traffic around it. I'd force the big loop.
We could add signage to say it's a one-way.
I mean, I could see one-way, Anne, I'm kind of building on your idea, but changing it a little bit, I could see one-way in this lower run, and then one-way out. So you're only, you only have one-way traffic in front of the front door. So these are going one-way that way, and this is going one-way that way, and the main lane in front of the building is one-way. That would at least cut down on the kind of confusion of cars in both directions. I would be completely comfortable with that, but I think you're right, that introduces signage.
If you park it here, you're going to forget that it's one-way, you turn around and go back out the other way.
Well, it's the way it is now. Everyone kind of knows that you come in and around and just.
We could definitely have signage.
You'd have to have signage, and it, you would, you would probably, you're right, you'd probably have some people that are.
They were always going to do that.
You could avoid that.
Signs there now, and there's one way there now.
You could avoid that by angle parking, which would also somewhat decrease your aisle width.
Angle parking is.
Would lose spots with angle parking.
It would lose a lot of spots. It's very inefficient. But it would hammer down the idea that it's one-way.
Well, if, even if, maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but if you, when you first come in, you cross the crosswalk, if there was a sign that said "right turn only," you're forced into that first bay, and then really, you don't, I mean, even if you never said that that was the, the walk, or see the drive near the building, you're sort of forced to only go one-way at that point. If you're turning right, I mean, I would doubt very few people would go down the middle bay and then make a, another right-hand turn unless there was just no spaces.
I'm not quite sure with the three bays, how this all is going to work, but, you know, maybe.
Worst thing you can have is confusion.
But I guess what I'm saying is if you told people from the, right off the bat, "right turn only," then you have to make a right turn, and then from that point, very little traffic, at least from what I would think would be.
They come down here, down here, and then they come this way.
They could come that way, but I mean, how often would that happen? Really, all these would have to be filled.
You need to think about how, how do you want it to go? I mean, you don't, yeah, so if you want people to come this way, this way.
But that's the thing, if you have two big "do not enter" signs.
But I think.
You'd have to have two "do not enter" signs on each side, and then have a one-way directed at it. So you, as soon as you approach the, you up the hill, you're going to cross this crosswalk, you're going to see two "do not enter" signs, and "right turn only."
I think we're reaching a point where we're too big of a committee working on this. What I'm going to suggest is it's a valid, I think it's a valid point that Anne raised. We give it back to you.
Okay.
The other thing that I would like to do is to prohibit, other than the drop-off of the books, any live parking in front of the building. No parking at all, because it becomes too confusing.
Yeah, well, that's your fire lane anyway, probably.
That doesn't mean anything.
People pull straight up and go through the "do not enter" sign and.
Yeah.
Pull right in front.
You could mark the.
I guess we're at the shoe.
Then they realize that they're going the wrong way, so they back out.
You could put, you could mark it all, "fire lane, no parking here," and somebody will still.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the board?
I think so.
So we'll add no parking. Design review, Hal, John, you want to say something?
I'm wondering if Anne's initial question really was talking to, talking about crosswalks, not sidewalks, or one-way traffic or two-way traffic. I think her initial comment was just to add some kind of type of crosswalk from the parking lot to the main entrance, if I'm not mistaken.
It was that, as well as making these one-way in a loop, not two-way traffic.
But I don't think you're asking for sidewalks.
No, I'm not asking for sidewalks, no, not at all. No, no sidewalks.
So we did, we did, you saw our report from the meeting, and I think that, you know, we focused on the lamppost fixtures. I don't know if you've gotten any further with the design of what the actual fixtures would be.
We have the, the cut sheets here tonight. I mean, I think we also owe you the paver choice color and materials, so it may be more appropriate to just present both of those to you at the, whenever we've got the paver selection in place. But we do have the lights chosen.
Okay. The other issue was the, the lower walkway. We discussed there was only one way out of the lower walkway, that we had a sidewalk coming through the steps.
Correct, and that's been, that, your comments have been incorporated, but they, but that walkway ends at the driveline, which kind of gets back to the point about, the difficulty is, is extending those, those crosswalks across the driveline is extending them to, into the, the middle of the, the turn into the next run of parking, and so there's no real good termination for that crosswalk in those two, in those two locations.
People are going to do that anyway, they're going to walk out of that entrance.
And go, and go straight across, correct. I mean, I appreciate that that kind of change in material does, at least provides a visual cue to slow down, and that, and that may be just something that we need to look at to create at least a few more zones that come across that, that creates that visual caution kind of signifier.
But I think those are the items that we discussed. There was also, we mentioned a drop-off. I think you have been sharing the same concern about the book drop area, and allowing people to pull in there and everything, you know, just for a brief moment to drop off.
And we brought the possibility of, just to think about, for the designers to think about a way for people to pull up to the front entrance and drop off children or elders, and then go park the car, and do this in such a way that it doesn't interrupt or obstruct other traffic in the area. Whether there's enough room for that, we don't know, but it's something, we didn't make the stipulation, but we thought something that needed some, some more consideration.
I think the, just, I'm Joe Solomon from Dallas, but I think the addition in parking spaces, you eliminated that central garden area, that loop, basically, that everyone went around. You provided many more spaces for parents to be able to pull in, and actually allow the kids to discharge and go into the library. Like, the, the issue that I see with having a drop-off location in the front, it's, there's no easy, parents are going to pull up, they're going to discharge out of both doors, they're going to have vehicle, you, you talk about two-way, never mind one-way, someone trying to come around and clip in a door. I think adding those spaces is just creating a safer zone for parents to be able to pull up, allow their children to get out, and allow them to cross over to get into that location. Having the one-way is only going to make it that much safer, you know what I mean? So at the end of the day, I think, you know, having a pull-off in front of the school, people are going to use, no parking sign, they're going to do that no matter what. People don't always pay attention to signs, it is what it is, but having a bump-off and having cars pull up for those two spaces that you're able to provide, people are going to still queue in that one-way area and discharge. So I think having the spaces is a better and safer way for parents to allow to pull up and actually pull into those spaces, and that's what we discussed as a group after the fact. So we appreciated the comment, we looked at every avenue possible with it, but it just, it was safer for parents to be able to pull into the space. We all have to realize, too, this is a brand-new parking lot. It's going to be a little bit of a, a training aspect for new parents and visitors to come into that space based on a, an existing condition to a new parking lot. So I think whatever we can do on one-way access, if that's the answer to this, provide that, and then retrain, you know, the visitors and parents as they come into the new library, this is how it is, and this is how it's got to be, you know?
Well, one of the things that I've seen in some parking lots, in the spaces closest to the building, parents with infants, so if you took two spaces, in the middle one on each side, and said "drop-off only," so people pull into those, drop the children off.
That's actually, that's exactly what we talked about in the meeting with the design review committee, is signing a couple of those spots as family spots or drop-off spots, and I think that's, that's not a bad idea.
I just want to mention that that is a bit problematic. We have just as many families that come in, we have just as many seniors who come in who aren't necessarily handicapped, they don't have handicap stickers for their cars, and I've heard feedback from, from them that if we are going to put in these family spots, they would like consideration for their needs as well. So it begins to be a little bit of how many of these spots and how many different groups are new.
But they're only available, a drop-off is 10 minutes, and they're out.
Well, if you don't designate it for a particular, whether it's a family or senior, just call it drop-off, then.
It's a drop-off.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
It's just, you know, 10-minute, minute, minimum.
Yeah, so that's, that's not a bad idea. We, I think we can sign a handful of the spots for, for drop-off, closest to the building.
Any other questions for the board? Questions?
I just want to ask one more question, and I know it's not in our purview, but what's the, what's the, the change in the mechanical systems and all of that? Is there, is there an upgrade going into this facility?
Yeah, there is, although, yeah, so all of the, all of the rooms, the program of the building has changed, so all of the duct work and the way even air gets distributed throughout the building has changed. That having been said, the, the units, the furnaces that you have were purchased, I think in 2009. It was a pretty recent investment the town made in nine units that serve the building now, and all of those are being reused. So we're relocating them in the building, but we're reusing those furnaces. The condensing units as well on the outside are new, are relatively new, and we're reusing them as well. So reconfigured duct work, new reconfigured plan, all the rooms are different, but the, but the core equipment has been reused.
Better building envelope?
Oh, much better building envelope, yes. We're meeting, I think you're agreeing communities, so we're obligated to stretch code, we're meeting that, we're exceeding that, a good, tight, super insulated envelope, yep.
Thank you.
Questions from the public?
So we've been working with everybody very well. We love the library, we want to be part of the process.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you know who you are?
Janine Neal.
And your address, if you don't mind.
101 Branch Street.
Right across the street.
Not across the street, same side.
And I feel like, you know, everything that has been expressed, you know, we've expressed a lot of the same things. The only thing that I sort of was thinking about tonight was all that lighting, even though it's being lowered, it feels like it's been a lot over there, more, like, you know, all day, all night? So I just wanted to sort of throw that out there, can you turn off half the outside lights at night, or sensors, or just?
The answer is, yeah, I mean, the, the beauty of brand-new electrical is to have an energy management system that we should be able to program lights or control them with, with controls that, you know, shut off every other light, but we, you know, on the other aspect of it, we want to make sure it's safe for people who pull in there and that, you know, that doomsday stuff in there as well. So I think working, and I think we have, we'll accommodate whatever we need to do to, to make sure that it's safe for the public as well as accommodating for the.
Some of these new LED light fixtures, you can actually turn them down, right? You can program them to turn them down to half its intensity and all that kind of stuff. So a nighttime action like that is probably.
We just have to incorporate that.
We've, just so everybody knows, we supplied the light calc photometric plan for the, for the parking lot to Bob. We would be more than happy to try to establish some kind of control for the later at night. I mean, that.
Yeah, I would think after hours, it could go to a very minimal situation.
Do other libraries in similar types of locations, in the middle of a residential zone, not near any kind of businesses, I mean, do they typically leave their, I mean, in communities like Situate, would they leave their lights on all night? Because, you know, this library has never done that before.
The answer is now they do more so, especially if they're secluded. And it's like this, there's a couple of libraries that I'm aware of that dropped down, where they're basically in a, they don't keep all of them on, but they'll, that's what we're talking about, there'll be selected lights on just for security reasons.
Did the police recommend that?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, is there any discussion with that?
Absolutely. So, well, I will be very sensitive to that, and we'll, we can talk through how we're going to accommodate those needs. I can tell you the light fixture itself, it's, it's a lot less of a burden on neighbors based on the downlighting of these fixtures, I'll tell you that much.
I think what we would do initially is just make sure that our lighting spec is controllable or adjustable, and then it may come down to your police chief, or however you decide you want to operate it, but we'll make sure that it's at least adjustable so that there's some flexibility.
Good. Any other questions? Richard, I'm going to give you a break.
Oh, well, thank you.
I'm going to let you rest up for something. I think we need a motion. Got it handed out, I think it's the one with the checkmark in the upper right hand corner. Start down with, you want to be a reader?
Is Anne voting on this? And she make a motion on this? You've got six.
Good point.
Sorry. But I can read once he makes.
Well, it says, "I move."
If I get to start. The site plan for administrative review for 85 Branch Street. I move to make a finding that the site plan entitled "Situate Town Library Design Development Set Dated March 12, 2015 With Revisions Through March 26, 2015," we have it, is that the most current one we have?
That's that one.
Okay, that's that one, okay.
That marked up.
"By Udin's LO Architecture LLC Meets the Requirements of the Town of Situate Zoning Bylaw, Section 770.6. Site Plan Review Standards of Review," I'm sorry, "Site Plan Review Standards of Review to a Degree Consistent with a Reasonable Use of the Site for the Purpose Permitted by the Regulations of the District in Which the Land is Located and to Approve the Site Plan for the Town Library Subject to the Following Conditions. One, the site plan entitled "Situate Town Library Design Development Set Dated March 12, 2015 With Revisions Through March 26, 2015 By Udin's LO, LO Architecture LLC For Expansion of the Town Library Is a." expansion of the town library is approved, except that it may be modified if changes are necessary to meet the conditions below. Two, six reduced sets of 11-by-17 prints and PDFs shall be provided to the planning board for distribution to town departments and for the files. Three, the building shall meet all requirements of 605 CMR 6.00 and the Massachusetts State Building Code for Public Library Construction. Four, materials and details of construction shall meet all requirements of the DPW, Board of Health, Fire Department, Conservation Commission, Building Department, and Commission, Commission on Disabilities. Where the site plan administrative, administrative review requires approval permitting or licensing from any state, any local, state, or federal agency, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the Town of Situate Planning Board's approval of the site plan. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Five, two kitchen areas are proposed. One is to serve solely as a staff break room, the other is to serve as a space for drinks and snacks to be set up during temporary events. There will be no preparing, cooking of food for the public, all drinks, snacks will come from outside vendors.
Would there be catering allowed? If you were having an event and somebody wanted to cater?
Yes.
So, that would fall under drinks and snacks?
Yeah, that seems a little limited.
This is from the health director, this is what she's looking for, based on the type of kitchen it is, so I think it's a good kind of, sort of, all-purpose condition, and then you don't really regulate every single thing that happens, so...
I was wondering, like, if you had a Keurig coffee machine serving Starbucks coffee, that would sort of invalidate.
Well, that's another whole thing.
That would be a drink.
I think that's exactly why she's asking these kinds of questions, 'cause if you're gonna serve the public on a regular basis, I think that's one thing, but this doesn't really envision that.
Catering fare wouldn't mean that they would cook in the library. They'd bring it all in.
Warm it maybe is, is all.
Yeah, the statement, "come from outside vendors," I would think would cover a caterer, no?
Yeah, I think if you needed to put something, said, "all catering, drinks or snacks will come from outside vendors." That work for you?
Sure.
All right.
We did discuss that, but you saw it in our warrant.
All right, condition number six? Six. "The number of parking spaces for a library is not specifically regulated by the table of minimum requirements, section 760.6 of the Situate zoning bylaws, but is included in all other uses. In this table, subject to determination by the planning board, the 106 spaces shown on the plans include 80 spaces based on the standard of one space per 400 foot, 400 square foot for a 32,113 square foot building, from 605 CMR 6.08, 5E, and in addition, eight handicap spaces and 18 spaces for library staff. The maximum number of, the maximum number of staff on is 20."
Just say, "is 20."
The number, the maximum number of staff is 20. The planning board determines that the number of parking spaces, as shown on the plans, 106, is adequate for the proposed use.
Do we say anything about traffic flow, or is that something that comes later? Certainly say something like that?
We should say something in here.
Traffic flow should be one way right into the first section, one way right into the second section, however we had talked about it, so that it's one way coming out in front of the building. How do you word that?
We said the initial, initial traffic direction should be, then you make your right turn, whatever, and I put a, have that reviewed as, as the library's operation.
Do you wanna make...
The goal of the, of the traffic discussion was to get one-way traffic in front of the library.
I wanna see what the plan is.
I think it's... Do you want the traffic engineers to do that?
So, if we just say, said that as our stated goal.
Yeah, I'd say the stated goal is one-way traffic, and they'll come back and present, you know, whatever, whatever plan is.
Prior to the, prior to the pre-construction, or do you wanna see it sooner than that?
It's designed for two-way.
You know, I'm not imagining it taking long, right?
Yeah, I don't imagine it would have come back.
Go through all the other conditions for that one, and then you wanna hold off and vote the whole thing.
Okay, let's, let's hold, and let's...
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem.
So, let's hold, let's hold adding traffic into six, we'll go with construction seven.
You want me to start reading, or am I allowed to read?
I think you're allowed to read.
Thank you. Construction seven. "The following items shall be added to the plans prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Design data for the sewer pump recommended manufacturer and model shall be specified. Elevations shall be added to the pump station detail as required by the DPW. Note nine shall be corrected as to the name of the town. A, a four-inch private sewer force main in Branch, it should be Street, on the library's side of the road shall be added to the plans."
I've, can I ask a question? We, we have no record of that, and we're not really doing any work in Branch Street, or connecting to the force main that's been located in Branch Street, because it's a private main, we can't really...
This is something that the DPW wanted to see, I think you need to discuss that with the DPW.
Okay, I, I had a comment, and he was like, you know, it was just a, a comment, it wasn't necessarily, you know...
No, he said it should be added to the plan.
Okay, we'll talk with Hancock Engineering and get the surveyor to add it.
Okay, great. "Branch Street on the library's side of the road shall be added to the plans. Height and details shall be added as required by the DPW. A note shall be added that flowable pill is required for any excavation in Branch Street. A note shall be added that drain manhole covers shall be constructed of brick. A, a pre-construction conference will be required prior to the start of construction, including the planning board's consulting engineer, the site contractor, and the town planner."
I think instead of the, the planning board's consulting engineer, it should just say a representative of the DPW, since we haven't been using a consulting engineer. I just copied that from another one, and I forgot to change that.
Okay.
So, 'cause we're not using...
So, how do you want, including the...
Including a representative of the DPW, the site contractor, and...
The town board, okay.
So, the planning board, you won't be there?
I'll be there, but the town consulting engineer won't be there.
Oh, okay, all right.
Number nine. "Prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, a schedule of construction activity shall be given to the town planner, and the applicant shall provide funds to cover the cost of inspections and attendance at the pre-construction conference by the town's consulting engineer."
Can we...
We have to add a stop after "town planner" on that one.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
But the rest of that sentence is eliminated? Yeah. Ten. "All work within the row of Branch Street, right-of-way of Branch Street, shall be coordinated with the DPW. The DPW shall be notified prior to the start of work during the right-of-way of Branch Street. Other than as required by this board, there shall be no parking or idling of vehicles on Branch Street during construction." Eleven. "Storm water control measures shall be maintained according to Long-Term Pollution Prevention Plan and Storm Water Operation and Maintenance Plan dated March 3, 2015, submitted for the project and the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, SWDP. All clearing and earth-moving operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place." Number 12. "A crushed stone construction entrance, as detailed on the plans, shall be required and installed prior to the start of work. Water and sediment cannot be discharged into the rain garden slash bio-retention area until the site is fully stabilized." Thirteen. "The town planner is to be notified when erosion control measures are in place, when construction begins, and when construction is completed. If deemed necessary by the town planner, in consultation with the DPW, engineering staff, temporary sedimentation basins, check dams, silt socks, and/or noise and dust control may be required in addition to the erosion control measures shown on the plan. All erosion control measures shall remain until the town planner determines that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists." Number 14. "The conservation and natural resource office, resources officer shall be consulted regarding the preferred method of not re-removal. He shall be notified a minimum of one week prior to the work to review locations proposed to be removed in the field." Fifteen. "The memorial beach tree shall be relocated according to the plans and specifications. However, it shall not be relocated within 10 feet of a proposed drain line, drainage structure, or underground utility line." Sixteen. "Existing hardwood trees between the library and 101 Branch Street shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Trees intended to be preserved will be flagged prior to the start of construction." "The OMP and the library shall continue to work with beautification..." Oh, I'm sorry, it's me. Let's see, "The OMP and the library shall continue to work with beautification committee to identify locations where existing perennials and the memorial stones will be relocated. The beds in front of the library shown with..."
Little, very opie, I think you're gonna leave.
Whatever. "...are facing Branch Street with good candidates." We have to stick up number 18.
Number 18. "The following information or planned changes shall be provided. The shade tree in the southwest corner of the parking lot should be labeled as to plant type." Next bullet item. "The wet meadow grass mix and lawn mix should be specified on the plan." Next bullet item. "A minimum of three evergreen shrubs should be added to the shrub screen at the northwest corner of the site to provide all-year greenery and visual interest." Next bullet item. "Hornbeam, birch, dogwood, or linden, or a similar tree should be substituted for the sweet gum tree at the south corner of the building for easier maintenance." Next bullet item. "The rain garden slash bio-retention basin details on sheet L 6.1 and C 4.2 should be reviewed and appropriate details chosen for the site." Next bullet item. "The bio-retention basin detail on sheet C 4.2 shows planting in the basin and refers to the planting plans for plants. The planting plan shows the area to be wet meadow grass mix. The two plans should be coordinated so that what is desired is shown." Number 19. "The following will be reviewed by the Design Review Committee prior to purchase or installation. Bullet item one. The final exterior lamp post fixtures to be installed in the parking area and on the walkways. Bullet item number two. The final walkway and patio surface treatments for brick paver colors, et cetera. Construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, and shall cease no later than 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sunday or legal or federal holidays."
That's number 20.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
Change this back to six.
I have a question on six. Is the goal really one-way, or is it just, is the goal to reduce the, to improve the pedestrian access?
By having it one-way, I think we've improved the pedestrian access. People don't have to be concerned with people going, cars going in two different directions, they're only going one.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking that the goal is to have the pedestrian access. If there's a better plan to come up with, they could potentially come up with that.
Yeah, I think, my thinking aloud as you sit there and you say that, here's what the goal is, and it may be accomplished by either directing traffic one-way, or, or by signage, or by cross...
Well, I mean, just as an example, Ann, they may come up with a situation where the crosswalk is not in the middle of the drive, it's to one of the islands or something, as an example.
But the islands are grass-covered, and nobody's supposed to be walking on them. I think, I don't think that we theoretically need crosswalks per side if there is one-way traffic, that people will automatically, hopefully, look to the right to be sure that they're not going to be hit. There won't be two-way traffic, it's only going one-way.
One of the advantages, I think, of that strategy is that you can do it with signage. Signage is cheap, it's movable, and if it really turns out to not be working well, you can revisit it.
I think that's a very good statement to make, 'cause it, this could create some confusion that none of us can predict at this point, but it's worth a shot. I think you're right, Ann, that, you know, one-way traffic in front of the main entrance will make it a little less confusing for patrons, you know, pedestrians crossing the street there. But, but this is no different than any parking lot that we all confront in a shopping center or anywhere in, in the world.
Whole, whole park.
It is in the, most likely, and there're gonna be a lot of children, especially when there's a children's program.
Yeah, so, that's, that's the, that's the approach here, is to maybe try the one-way and see if that helps.
We have verbiage for one-way?
I've got a try, you wanna...
Throw it out.
Trying. Okay, the goal expressed by the planning board is to create a traffic pattern with one-way traffic flow along the main entrance elevation, west elevation of the facility. It is left to the design team to modify the present site design to best achieve the goal.
Do you want to review that design before the start of construction, before the pre-construction conference?
I'd like to see it.
Within, as soon as it's available?
Prior to, prior to pre-construction?
As soon as it's available, but prior to the pre-construction, prior to scheduling.
And you still got too much more, too much more engineering?
Excuse me?
You got, what, two more months of engineering?
We do. Chance, in all likelihood, we wouldn't be reconfiguring the parking lot, we would be signing it, and, in a way that allows the, facilitates the one-way. I think your, your comments were...
Come back and show us what that looks like.
Or even PDF it to Lorge, and you can get it around to us, I mean, do we actually need to have these folks come all the way back to another meeting?
Nope.
Right, there are a number of conditions here that we will meet, and this is like one, any one of those, right? So, we will incorporate all of this into our drawings and get them back for review. Unless you wanna see this, this specific point, I mean, we're happy to...
I mean, I think there, yeah, there are a whole lot of things that we're gonna...
There are a whole lot of...
That, um, we definitely wanna see that plan before the pre-construction is scheduled. So, that means, like, not at the last minute when you're ready to schedule the pre-construction.
No, I understand.
Be running around and, you know...
So, a question for you, maybe a larger question, that the six reduced sets of 11-by-17 that get submitted and, and distributed to the town departments, would you like to see all the, the revisions incorporated in that before we produce that? Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll work on that, I think we can hopefully get this, even in, in the next couple of weeks, you know, certainly well in advance of the pre-construction conference, and then you have that to... A lot of them have been incorporated, by the way, anyway, a lot of the things that were read tonight have already been incorporated.
Yes, a few things certainly have. One other thing was, did you wanna go back to the design review? I believe they're meeting April 7th, if they're willing to have, you know, another item on the agenda.
I don't know that we'll be prepared with the pavers quite yet, but maybe we'll pick you up at your next meeting after that, in May, May-ish time would probably be a good time.
I got a motion, I assume I have a second?
Second.
One other thing I just wanted to ask you all is, there were a lot of items discussed here tonight that are not in these conditions because they weren't discussed before, like, having the ability to adjust the intensity of the lights in the parking lot, what were some of the other ones? This one, anyone else have any?
I'm thinking between, decent conversation there and agreement.
So, I don't know if you want to add any of those in as conditions to make sure that they really get done.
I'm not sure that we, I mean, that's, that's not a bad idea if it's limited to that one issue, but it's a, it's a, not a slippery slope necessarily, but it could be a very long path, depending on how detailed we want it.
It's a wonderful... I'm just talking about conditions that we all remember and agree on.
Well, I think we should address that one, because that was one that has the potential to impact the others and all of that, so let's, let's put that one in. to impact the others and all of that, so let's, let's put that one in.
Who would, who's most, it's not really the DPW, who would sort of review that? Because the police chief would have to look at the lighting.
No, we're just saying, give the ability to control the lighting, then the final.
We're not talking about.
Final program is, town can figure that out over time.
Just making sure that it's controllable and adjustable.
Right.
Yes, and, and it will be, any modern system will be.
I can turn on lights and turn off lights with this at my house right now.
Yep, you can also watch your job.
We have to program it to your phone.
We should give you a control.
Initiative number 21, Richard will control the lights.
Rich, and Richard's cell phone number will be available to all of us.
So what, um.
It'll be on the lights.
Do you have lights?
Do you want to add?
Uh, something like, uh, the lighting in the parking lot will be, um, will be able to be adjustable for intensity.
I would just say programmable.
Programmable?
Because that's not only intensity, but it's when it goes up and when it goes off.
It'll be programmable.
Do I have a modified motion?
I am so moved.
I have a modified second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well done, looking forward.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you so much, this is helpful. We'll get these drawings.
It's really exciting, looks great, gonna be a huge addition to the plan.
Thank you.
Conrad, not that it matters, I'm just curious, what are you using for software?
For the drawings?
Yeah.
This is all AutoCAD. Why?
Should be Revit.
Revit? Not Revit, not this, not this project.
Architects usually will use Revit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still yet to filter down through the surveyors, but it's getting there.
This is the walkway, at least to the line.
Of course, oh, absolutely.
It was always just a law.
Well, it's the same company, really. It's the same company, huh? We ought to use Kornor.
Right, but that was, I think that's very important, because I think you're right.
I did, actually.
Yeah, pleasure. We'll see you at some point. We know we've got a couple of things to run by you.
Conrad, the renderings, I'm just curious, was that sketch-up?
Yeah, this is done with another program called ArchiCAD, which we model in, and then Maxwell is the rendering engine.
Excellent, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Laura, do you want to hold on to this, because this is kind of halfway here between, I don't know, would you rather us? Okay, we'll give you a new one with everything updated. Okay, thanks so much.
I'm a minute late, but the next item is a continuing public hearing for special permits to 529 to 531 Country Way. I prefer you to hold ladder truck with the new ladder truck for the.
Oh, just the train.
Hold the old ladder truck away.
Did they really?
They did, I saw the new one now in the driveway this morning. New one's there, and the old one is gone. Yep. Just talking to the chief this afternoon.
Did they, did they sell it?
Yeah, they traded it in. They're close, they can sell it.
Yeah, it was definitely, had some value to it.
Yeah. It's going to be the, uh, the lead engine in Fiji in a couple of months.
It'll store away in one of the, uh.
Can we get some things on the horizon?
Get back to work.
The next item is a continuation of the common driveway, special permit, 529, 531 Country Way. It must be John Dow.
Uh, no, for the record, Steve Giosa representing the applicant this evening, John Dow and Shamrock Realty.
Okay, floor is yours, why don't you describe your project?
Okay, very good, Mr. Chairman. The subject property, I have an aerial exhibit before you this evening, just to give you an orientation. We're located on the west side of Country Way, just to the south of Captain Pierce Road, and this is a property that's been before this board as a Form A last, last May, I believe, and also before the zoning board to obtain a special permit for the redevelopment of two previously constructed homes on the property. This land has, at the current point in time, a driveway access on the south side of the property. There are five different structures on the property, two of which have been designated as houses built back in the 1930s. This board approved the Form A, separating those houses onto separate lots, and the ZBA granted a special permit in the fall, essentially saying that redevelopment or reconstruction of those homes would be inappropriate under the town bylaw. This is a very basic picture of the existing building configuration and driveway on the property. Again, Country Way is located off to the right side of the plan, north to the top of the drawing. We've highlighted the five existing buildings, 529 and 531 Country Way, which are the two addresses, there are this structure and this structure. There are also three other structures on the property. There's some gravel areas, lawn areas associated with the land, and we're here this evening requesting approval of a common driveway, a formal request. It's been the applicant's proposal to utilize a common driveway for this site from the beginning, the purpose being to minimize additional curb cuts onto Country Way. And, so again, this is the proposed plan. It shows the dwellings as the ZBA approved the plan, with the footprints that the zoning board also indicated would be appropriate for this particular neighborhood. The more, engineering details have been developed since our meeting with the ZBA, and we have developed a plan that would utilize the existing curb cut onto Country Way so that we're not disturbing the remainder of the frontage and we're maintaining the driveway. This particular curb cut has served two homes historically, since the 30s, and so that that particular location, from a land disturbance standpoint and alteration of walls along Country Way, made the most sense. We can utilize an existing break in the wall. As you travel north along the frontage on Country Way, there's actually a retaining wall, so that relocating the driveway into any other location would disrupt that, require significantly more grading of the property, and I think more overall disruption of the neighborhood. So, the idea is to utilize that driveway, enter the property, bring it in through a driveway, common driveway easement to the rear of the site, and then split, where the lots do split in this location here and have separate driveways feeding each proposed dwelling to be located in the rear. As part of the project, the applicant would be required to complete percolation tests for septic systems, new Title V and town compliant. Septic systems would be constructed on the property, so we think from a water quality standpoint, there's an immediate improvement there versus the older systems that exist on the property. As we've moved through this process, we had an original design that was submitted to the town as part of our application. Prior to that application, we did meet with the fire chief to review the features associated with the common driveway that are of importance for emergency access. What came out of that discussion was an agreement that a 14-foot wide paved driveway system would be an appropriate width for this location and this density, with the provision that we provide an emergency vehicle turnaround point. And also, when I originally met with the fire chief, he suggested that when we get close to the house, instead of just having the driveway split and have landscaping here, we've actually put in a little cobblestone break between the two driveways, just to provide a little more backup and maneuvering, not so much for a fire vehicle, but maybe more for an ambulance or police vehicles in that area. So that was something that we did add early on, and also for maneuvering a T being created here for backing up of emergency vehicles into that particular location. After we made the initial filing, there was a second review by the fire department. They did ask for us to extend that T a little further, which we have done. And as you might expect, the project also incorporates the required stormwater management for a project of this type. Our original plans contemplated a grassed water quality swale, picking up the runoff from the bulk of the lot and directing it down to a new catch basin to be located on the property just before Country Way, with an overflow into a underground recharge system. The project was designed with that particular design in mind, and it was reviewed by Merrill Associates. Mr. Palmieri issued a comment letter suggesting and recommending a number of revisions to the plan. We've been working on those revisions, and we've come to a, a modified design that incorporates Mr. Palmieri's comments and comments from other parties in town, and those modifications have been a secondary overflow from the lower recharge system into a level spreader system to avoid creating a point discharge from the site. We've also added a design for roof drain recharge for both dwellings as primary recharge for all of the roof runoff, based on the square footage. And it's important to keep in mind, the ZBA capped the square footage as what you see here, so what we've designed for is the maximum potential roof area being captured in a subsurface recharge system, a separate system being proposed for each house. And even with the overflows from that area and the lawn areas being created, we've created swales around the buildings to direct the water in a controlled fashion, so we're capturing it and mitigating for the peak flows associated with the changes to the property. So we've done an analysis in my discussions, in my engineers' discussions with Mr. Palmieri. I think we've reached an agreement on a design that meets the standards that the town has put forward for stormwater management and for a project of this type. We'd be bringing in new water services to serve both houses. This water services would fall within the driveway easement area on the property, and we've also modified the easement area at Mr. Palmieri and Merrill Associates' request to incorporate the roof drain recharge system close to Country Way, so that the long-term maintenance is now incorporating not only the driveway, but all of the stormwater management systems associated with the driveway within a designated easement area on the property. As this project goes to the next stage, assuming this board grants approval, we'd be doing some additional soil testing on the property with the Board of Health. There has been a number of soil test pits. We have soil logs listed on the plan. We have five test pit results shown, but we have to satisfy Board of Health, so there'll actually be eight more test pits being completed on the property for soils verification associated with the septic systems, four per lot as required by Title V. And I believe Mr. Palmieri and Merrill has recommended some additional, just verification testing in the area of each of the recharge systems, and we've agreed that that's an appropriate, if this board agreed, an appropriate condition as this project moves forward. So we have volume mitigation and recharge for the site. We also have water quality mitigation. We have done an analysis for meeting your requirements for 90% total suspended solids removal. In order to achieve that, we're utilizing the grass swale, a deep-sump catch basin that is going to be equipped with a hydrocarbon and TSS filtering system, and then the recharge system. And when you add the components up, we are just a little bit north of 90% TSS removal. And I think it's important to stress, it's a driveway where we're not anticipating a large TSS load for this particular site, but we are meeting the requirements of the, of the zoning. That's pretty much it. We're, again, this is a special permit request under your common driveway regulations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
We'll hear from Mr. Merrill, Jason, Jason?
Joshua.
Joshua, that's pretty close.
I've been calling Jason worse before, so, thank you very much.
You need to be called Jason again.
My name is Joshua Vos from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, and as requested, we provided a review of this particular project. Just while I have the board's ear quickly, the objective is of our review are, there's three objectives. Number one is we want to document compliance with the applicable regulations for such a project. Number two, we want to look out for areas of potential liability for the board or the town in approving such a project. And number three, we want to make sure that the project's designed in good engineering practice and that, you know, at the end of our review, hopefully, the project's a better project for the applicant and also for the board, and that's our main goal. Our deliverable is a report that we submitted through law through the office. It's been an initial report and a couple of follow-up reports. And generally speaking, the report, the, the two aspects of the report I want to point out is, the goal is to have a written documentation of compliance for this particular project and how it complies with each of the regulations, so it is somewhat lengthy. However, we've tried to format the report so that a board member could somewhat easily identify the issues or the, the areas that need to be addressed or had been addressed and, and key in on them without reading the entire report and all the other areas where the site complies. Without getting into all the detail, the, I think, you know, we looked at the, the project from a site plan review standpoint, common driveway, but mainly from a drainage standpoint, and I think the overall design was sound and the approach was sound. A couple of things that we, we want, we were looking to have addressed were ensuring that the intent of the design was met, the plans showed, and showed enough detail so that the design and the site could be constructed as intended. We suggested some swales around the houses to make sure that runoff gets to where it's supposed to go into that swale along the driveway. We also identified the importance of some of the maintenance measures and making sure the maintenance measures were incorporated into the common driveway agreement, because as good as the design is, if these structures aren't maintained, they don't act as designed, and that's when drainage problems, you know, occur. The other thing is, Steve mentioned the test pits. We just, we suggested that test pits be performed basically beneath each of the, the systems. There is one test pit in the corner of the main infiltration system, but it's recommended that we have another test pit on the other side, just to ensure the soils are consistent. And once again, the design works as it's, as it's intended. So those were our main comments. I'm obviously happy to answer any specific questions the board members may have about our review, but I think, you know, generally speaking, the design, again, the intent was good, and I think they did a good job of sort of, you know, cleaning up the plan so that when it's constructed, it's actually constructed as the design was intended. The only other thing I'll mention is that, as Steve mentioned, the point charge discharge, the runoff currently goes down to Country Way now, and so that's the natural way the runoff should go under proposed conditions, and that's how the design works. You know, we just wanted to make sure that when that happens, the water wasn't concentrated when it enters on a Country Way and it was dissipated as it, as it should and as it presently is now, so that was the other aspect of the design that we had recommended be somewhat tweaked, and they did do that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Laura?
This property, I think you will remember, it has these five, had these five small houses on it, and when the applicant came into the planning board for the Form A plan, I think, you know, everyone kind of knew that it was leading towards redevelopment of that property. The two lots are non-conforming as far as frontage. They're, I think, about 48, 49 feet of frontage each, and they don't have double the lot size. They have, you know, 38,000, 36,000 square feet. So for area and, and lot frontage, they're non-conforming. The zoning board approved, you know, I think it's, there probably were some other ways they could do this, but they approved a special permit for changing a non-conforming, non-conforming structures, and the two homes that are going to be built were conditioned that they be no more than the 3,800 square feet, and also that they, they conform with zoning in all other respects except for the lot area and frontage. The idea of the common driveway is a good one. It reduces the number of curb cuts. Country Way can be a little bit windy and curvy, and this reduces the number of places where you have to watch out for cars coming in. You know, the houses are somewhat close together, but, you know, so are, you know, many homes in Situate. in Situate, and most of the stone wall is all, you know, in fact, there is no scenic road hearing that's required because the stone wall and, you know, whatever trees are there are going to be preserved. There's, you know, they're using the same opening that's there now. So, you know, it seems like a pretty constructive plan.
Good, thank you. Questions to the board?
Just, I'm curious, the zoning board required you to stay within a certain number of square feet for the dwellings so that the stormwater was of a particular, you know, capacity, but no more than that.
Well, what they were actually concerned with is that we weren't building houses that although could meet setback requirements from boundary lines, were too massive to really be properly accommodated on the lot. They were happy we were moving the structures back to the bulk of the lot in the rear portion and pulling the structures away from the street. So from an aesthetic standpoint, they looked at that as a positive. But they were afraid if the applicant had a free rein on the house size, they may come in with something that's, you know, twice the footprint we have here. Even if we could manage the drainage and the septic, it may not be in keeping with the neighborhood. So part of their concern was making sure there were enough restrictions to make sure the project's compatible with the neighborhood. And I think that was their primary concern on setting a limit on the size of the structure.
I have to say, I love that as a precedent. I don't know where we'll go with it, but that's pretty interesting. So to sort of, not to beat this horse too much more, but so if you've got a certain area of impervious that you can create but no more, is it expressed as an area of impervious or is it expressed as a square foot of living area in the house? Where I'm going is if I build a ranch, it's going to have the same number of square feet as the garrison maybe that you've shown. It's going to have twice the impervious.
Correct. They approved the maximum building square footage, which is the 30, living space is the 3,800 square feet. But they also approved a specific plan that showed the footprints we're showing here. So a deviation from that plan would require the applicant to go back. Secondly, the review by Merrill is predicated on this much impervious area. So any change to that would require us to come back to you folks and get Merrill to concur that we have not violated the drainage assumptions that have been put forward. So I think you have mechanisms on both sides to control that.
Very good.
Can I just add one thing that I forgot, which is that this common driveway is only going to be 14 feet wide. It's a little bit narrower than the usual. It's allowed as long as the fire chief approves it. He did review the plan. He did approve it. He also approved the turnaround size that you have.
Yep. And the maintenance agreement that the homeowners are going to enter into, that's been reviewed also and approved?
Yeah.
Yep, good.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question on that?
No, I'm done. Thank you, Steve.
And I'm really speaking to Merrill's report here. It looked like in one area they suggested incorporating the general specifications for maintenance of the flow guard system into the on-end plan. Has that been done?
That's one of the conditions that's kind of hanging out there. We talked about that, and they really have a lot of maintenance on that flow guard. So that was one of the things that I had mentioned that I thought really ought to be in that operation maintenance plan, and it's going to be, but that's one of the conditions of the special.
Oh, you've been integrated in that condition, okay. Does the same hold true for the other sort of open issues that I noticed that are still open?
I think we either got them on the plan. This was another one where we were scurrying around until about 5:00. And I think we either got them on the plan or they're in here.
Okay, so the soil testing, additional soil testing.
That's in here, yeah.
This issue with the berm on the west side versus the east side, that's been resolved?
We actually, and Laura hasn't seen this, but we actually did move that already on our drawing. It was originally drawn here.
Yeah.
You know, we misinterpreted what Peter was requesting us to do, so we've now shown it on the side, the east side, which is what he was looking for. So we have done that, and that would be in a final submittal to the town as a condition.
And then we've addressed easement language that stipulates the obligations on the stone wall?
Yeah. Merrill seemed to think that the stone wall could be sort of tricky with the two owners, and we actually called the agreement, it's usually called a common driveway agreement. We're calling it the common driveway stone wall agreement because the stone wall maintenance is going to be shared.
Any other questions on the board?
Yeah, I just, there is, just a clarification. Currently, there are five structures. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there, but there are two residents living there right now. I mean, there are two, of those five structures, only two are occupied, right?
There are only two that are recognized by the town as being legitimate single-family homes. This property has a lot of history going back a number of years, and apparently a prior owner had done some questionable conversions of the property, creating, in his mind or their mind, five living spaces, but it was done without proper permits. So the documentation that the town has accepted and the building commissioner has reviewed is that there are two legitimate single-family homes on the property currently. The other three structures, although at one time were partially converted to living space, were not recognized as living space, but they are physical structures from, you know, footprints on the property and creating impervious area from a drainage standpoint. But those would all be removed, all five structures would be removed if this project is approved.
Is there any historical value to any of those five structures? I'm really not that familiar with the structures, or I don't recall them in my mind, so.
Not that I'm aware of them. There's nothing that's been listed.
Yeah. It used to be chicken coops.
Okay.
Chicken coops.
I see. When they went free range, they left.
They're now riding west.
So what you're saying is no historical significance?
In fact, if I recall, it was a very interesting discussion on all five of them as to whether they were habitable or not.
Right, and they wanted to make them into condominiums.
That's correct. I remember that.
The two that are habitable are not inhabited at this time.
Not at the present time. They'd been rented for some time and...
Now they've been vacant for quite a while.
Yes, that's correct.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah, it is. I saw it.
Any other questions on the board? We have a motion to the board.
Yeah, it's a long one, okay. Someone else is doing 50 Countryway.
You approve a library when it is a driveway.
All right. I move to make the following findings of fact for the common driveway special permit for 529, 531, Countryway. Number one, John Dow, trustee of Shamrock Realty Nominee Trust, filed an application for a special permit for a common driveway serving two lots at 529 through 531, Countryway, with the town clerk on February 4th, 2015. Number two, the property at 529 through 531, Countryway...
Could I, this is very minor, but it's not through 531 because 530 is on the other side of the street.
Okay, so it should be comma?
529 and 531, I would think, right?
I just figured the dash was...
Well, yeah, I guess we were sort of presupposing that we're only talking odd numbers here.
Okay, okay. I just want to make this legal, that's all.
Okay.
So 529, comma, 531. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know. Whatever. If you want a comma, yeah, we can put a comma. I've never seen a comma with street numbers like that, like that, but that's okay.
Well, how about if I just say 529 dash 531?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Countryway is in the residence, shouldn't it be residential, but I read it.
Actually, you can call residence.
Residence R dash 2 and Water Resource Protection zoning districts. The planning board endorsed a Form A plan dividing the property into two parcels on May 23rd, 2014. These parcels were non-conforming as lots with respect to lot frontage. Number three, on September 17th, 2014, the zoning board of appeals approved a special permit slash finding pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, to allow two non-conforming single-family dwellings to be raised and replaced by two new dwellings, each on a lot with non-conforming frontage, with the condition that each new home not exceed 3,800 square feet and that all zoning requirements except frontage must be met. Now, not, maybe it's a picky, but it says the two. What about the other three?
I'm just not worried about them.
Okay.
Gone.
Okay. Number four, soil disturbance and vegetation removal is generally limited to what is necessary for the common driveway and its drainage system, septic systems, and new homes. The proposed stormwater management system has been reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, Merrill Incorporated, whose comments indicate the system has been adequately addressed with the revised plans. The common driveway meets the standards of Section 720 dot point 7A. Number five, the common driveway has a surface width of 14 feet. An email was received from the fire chief indicating that he has approved the width. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7B. Number six, the common driveway is accessed from Countryway, a major public road in Situate. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7C. Number seven, the water line is shown on the common driveway plan. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7D. Number eight, the common driveway cross-section shows base slash binder course and top course of one and one-half inch of bituminous concrete, each over a 12-inch processed gravel subbase. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 dot 7E. Number nine, the common driveway is approximately 220 feet in length. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7F. Number 10, the stormwater management system has been reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, Merrill Incorporated, whose comments indicate the system will be satisfactory with some minor changes. The common driveway will meet the requirements of Section 720 point 7G. Number 11, no driveways, parking areas, turning area, or other impervious area is located above the major components of the proposed septic systems, which are to be located behind the proposed houses. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7H. Number 12, screening is shown on both sides of the common driveway along with existing vegetation proposed to remain. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7I. Number 13, a turnaround of 54 feet in length from end of Hammerhead to opposite side of the driveway and 20 feet in width is provided. The fire chief indicated this is acceptable. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7J. Number 14, the consulting engineer has indicated that stopping site distance requirements at the entrance have been met. The common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 point 7K. Number 15, Countryway is a scenic road. No additional stone wall or trees greater than three-inch caliper are proposed to be removed. Thus, a scenic road hearing is not required. Number 16, based on these findings and information submitted by the applicant and reviewed by the board, the common driveway meets the requirements of Section 720 of the Situate zoning bylaw.
I guess findings of fact. Do I have a second? Discussion?
Second.
What's the, what's this next?
This is the find, that's, the first was just the findings of fact, right?
Yeah, you can vote at the end of page two.
Yeah. So I've got to sit there and say, I thought I had a motion to accept the findings of fact.
I saw you.
You do.
We were in discussion.
I had the discussion. The premature discussion is now over.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right. Based upon the testimony presented at the public hearing and the findings, I move to approve the special permit with the following conditions. Condition number one, one common driveway shall be constructed according to plans entitled "Common Driveway Plan," prepared for Shamrock Realty Nominee Trust by SciTech Incorporated, dated December 29th, 2014, with revisions through March 26th, 2015, and is further revised to meet these conditions. Number two, the common driveway shall be constructed to a width of 14 feet with two feet shoulder on either side with an emergency turnaround as shown on the plan. Shoulders shall be cleared and grubbed to a width of two feet. The common driveway shall be paved with bituminous concrete in two one and one-half inch coats with a 12-inch thickness of processed gravel base. Number three, lots one and two shall access over a single common driveway. No further extensions or attachments of any other roadways or common driveways or other access to other lots besides those created by the plan shall be permitted. Number four, prior to obtaining building permits, the applicant must obtain all necessary approvals from the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, Building Department, and Department of Public Works, and these shall be deemed conditions of the planning board approval. Number five, no new underground irrigation system shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy of the Board of Selectmen effective October 8th, 2014. In accordance with this policy, all irrigation systems installed in Situate must be supplied by on-site sources at the expense of the property owners. Common driveway slash stone wall agreement. Number six, a common driveway slash stone wall agreement shall assign to the owners of lots number one and lots number two, the responsibilities and costs of maintenance and repair of the common driveway and emergency turnaround, including snow plowing, as well as the catch basin's subsurface recharge system, grading, all other improvements for stormwater management in the common driveway easement and at the mortared stone retaining wall dividing lots one and two for approximately 50 feet.
Can we just add the level spreader in there after the catch basins and all that? So we just got to call out that there's the level spreader.
So as well as catch basin, subsurface recharge system, grading, comma, level spreader.
Level spreader.
And all other improvements for stormwater management in the common driveway easement. Number seven, the responsibilities of maintenance in the common driveway slash stone wall agreement shall include all requirements of the operation and maintenance plan, which shall be attached to the agreement together with other typical maintenance such as snow plowing, driveway repair...
This is level, no.
Level spreader?
No.
And other necessary repair of the stone wall. Number eight, the agreement shall require annual certification by an engineer that the stormwater system is being properly inspected and maintained per the operations and maintenance plan. The agreement shall be executed by the planning board and the homeowners and shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. Finalization of documents. Condition number nine, requirements for maintenance described in the general specifications for maintenance of flow guard plus, plus catch basin inset filters included with the applicant's stormwater report shall be added to the operation and maintenance plan. The operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning board as a standalone document, which shall also be included in the common driveway slash stone wall agreement. A final draft of the agreement shall be provided to the planning board within two weeks of the approval of this special permit. Number 10, the plans for the common driveway shall be submitted to the planning board for their signature after the expiration of the 20-day appeal period of this special permit. The plans and special permit shall be recorded together at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds.
Would you like me to pick it up from here?
If you'd like.
Sure.
Required prior to planning board signing plans. 11, the following notes shall be added to the plan. The lots on this plan shall not be further subdivided. The common driveway... The common driveway is owned by the homeowners. It shall not be maintained by the town and shall always remain private. A common driveway slash stone wall agreement assigns to the owners of lots one and two the responsibilities and costs of maintenance and repair of the common driveway and emergency turnaround, including snow plowing, as well as catch basins, subsurface recharge, grading, and all other improvements for stormwater management in the common driveway easement, and the mortared stone wall retaining wall dividing lots one and two.
We can throw a level spreader in there also.
Okay, a level spreader.
What is that? This long thing?
Pile of rocks.
Yeah.
Level pile of rocks.
Perfectly level.
Very expensive pile of rocks.
New construction must comply with the zoning board of appeals section, section six finding issued September 17th, 2014, which limits the gross floor area of living space for each new dwelling to 3,800 square feet. No new underground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy of the Board of Selectment effective October 8th, 2014. In accordance with this policy, all irrigation systems installed in Situate must be supplied by onsite sources at the expense of the property owner. Construction. 12. A pre-construction conference will be required prior to the start of construction, including the planning board's consulting engineer, the site contractor, and the town planner. 13. Prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, a schedule of construction activity shall be given to the town planner, and the applicant shall provide funds to cover the cost of inspections and attendance at the pre-construction conference by the town's consulting engineer. 14. Town planner's note is to be notified when construction begins and when construction is completed. All clearing and earthmoving operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures approved by the town planner and shown on the plan are in place. Such control measures shall remain in place until the town planner determines that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. 15. Additional soil testing shall be performed at the location of the recharge system and roof dry wells for each dwelling prior to the start of construction of the driveway. The testing shall be witnessed by the board's consulting engineer. 16. Construction of a common driveway shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer, who shall certify and write into the planning board at completion that the driveway and drainage structures were constructed in accordance with the approved plans. This certification shall be accompanied by as-built plans signed and stamped by a registered professional land surveyor and the supervising engineer. Inspections will be required for staking of limits of drainage basins and utility and roadway limits prior to clearing and grimming. Grading of drainage basements, placement and compaction of gravel subbase, placement of base slash binder, and placement of the top course of the common driveway. 17. Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the board's consulting engineer shall inspect the lots and notify the board and building commissioner that the grading conforms to that shown on the common driveway plan. 18. Construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. on weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on weekends and shall cease no later than sunset. No construction is permitted on Sundays and federal slash legal holidays. Do you want to do seven o'clock as we have in the library?
Yeah, I'm noticing for some reason the 7:00 p.m. isn't in there. But no later than seven, or 7:00 p.m., whichever is.
Is later.
Is it, I think it's whichever.
Is earlier.
It's earlier.
Earlier. Got that?
Got it.
19. There shall be no parking or idling of vehicles of Country Way during construction. 20. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied that access, construction of the common driveway, and installation of necessary utilities are in full compliance with the approved plans and the special permit. Administration. 21. The applicant shall post a bond for $5,000 prior to beginning construction of the common driveway to guarantee completion of the site work landscaping and cleanup of the site. After the town planner has inspected the site and found grading, loming, and seeding, cleanup of earth materials and construction debris to be complete, these funds shall be returned with interest to the applicant. 22. This special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town firm. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. 23. This special permit shall last within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use of construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9. 24. Failure to comply with any condition of this special permit shall cause it to be deemed invalid.
Question?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Did we close the public hearing? Or did I miss that?
You didn't take a specific vote to do that. You can.
I would, may I make one comment?
Sure.
I have to thank the engineer for doing an incredible job. That was.
Which one?
The consulting engineer.
Who's going to start?
I appreciate the opportunity from the board and staff for the opportunity to review the project, so.
But I think you did an exemplary job in your explanations. And you cranked everything. It was.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. I'll love you tonight.
And if I may address the board, I do have to ask or say that Laura, Karen, and Merrill were very good to work with on this and made the process a lot easier than it could have been with other individuals involved. And I know you usually hear the negative stuff. I think they were all very helpful and very professional right through the whole thing. So the applicant is appreciative of those efforts as well.
The other thing that helped is she got a snow day. The snow day helped.
The snow did help, yes.
Like you can't walk through the site.
Otherwise, she would've been down here and wouldn't able to address all of the points at that time.
Exactly. No, but thank you very much.
We have to, I move to we close the public hearing in a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I request a brief recess?
If you want a five-minute break, say so.
I would like a five-minute break.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Big zoning changes with special meeting.
Next item on the agenda is a continuation of public hearing of issue of special permit for Village Hill Valley District Fifty Country Way. English gentleman.
Good evening.
I think the.
Where do we leave us?
We left off at five, but I think that there's been six weeks into the easement, I think. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of work, and conversations have been going on about the easement.
Sure.
So I guess what I'd like to know before we get going is what you guys have done and what Laura has done.
Sure.
And what I have done, and we've had no virtual time to the schedule.
So we have been in contact with an organization called Greystone Management Solutions, which is an affiliate of Massachusetts Realty Group. It's all part of the same company that handles the real estate acquisitions and dispositions for the MBTA. We have spoken directly to Mark Boyle, Melissa McCormick, and Tom Cox, and had email exchanges with Tom. I had a conference call today with Mark and Tom. I gave them an overview of the project. I explained the existing bike path, which was presented to me as mitigation for the MBTA takings and whatnot in the town of Situate. I gave him sort of an overview of our project, how it connects to that bike path. I gave him a background and historic view of how we came to the point where the project needed the safety vehicle access over the bike path. He understood that. I assured him that there was a sufficient separation between the MBTA land in the railroad bed, the, you know, sound wall, as well as the chain link fence. He understood that the bike path construction could not have finished as a result of ADA compliance. I informed him that our goal would be to install and maintain the remainder of the bike path, have it passed through our property to Country Way, making it 100% handicap and wheelchair accessible. So they, and then after, so they told us that we need to submit a, you know, a package, which shows an engineering plan as well as the bike path, how it connects to their train station. They are very favorable to this particular project because it is, you know, transportation-oriented development. It's right near their train station. It's going to have 30 residential units. I got the impression that they were very eager to analyze this for us. And after that conversation, I informed both Greg and Chris as to the status of my conversation with those folks, and Chris was able to dig out the plan that actually showed the bike path going as far as it was supposed to go, up to Stockbridge Road, my recollection was. He scanned that, and we emailed that and sort of an overview plan to Tom Cox, just as a precursor so that they could visualize and understand. Tom actually indicated that he is very familiar with the area, and the plan was very helpful for him to visualize it, understanding, of course, that that was not the submittal package that we need to give him. They informed me that once they get that, a completed submittal package, it would be about 30 days for them to make a decision as to whether or not they would work with us to grant this relief that we requested. And then after that, we would get into the details of negotiating the easement and who was to do what, take care of whatnot. So it was an extremely productive meeting. We are talking to the correct people. We had some concern that maybe we were talking to the abyss, but no, we are talking to the correct group of people who deal with this type of stuff for the MBTA. They are familiar with this project. And I think as long as we, you know, stay on top of them, get them what they need, and stay on top of them, I think there's a very good likelihood that we would be able to achieve the relief that we need for this project to go forward. I did explain to them that this was basically the linchpin for this project, that, you know, unless we can get a fire truck to go across that area down to Drew Place, the project stalls. You know, I didn't, I didn't tell them that we could come back with other alternatives because at this time, we don't have any yet. But nonetheless, I wanted to make them understand the gravity of what we were asking them to do. They definitely, I mean, they mentioned something about consideration for the easement, but they didn't really seem to be hung up on that, and of course, we would have to deal with that if that were the case. But I think based on my conversation with them, that it's unlikely that they're going to require consideration of the easement, given what we're going to do and how it's located so closely to the train station, with us building it, with us agreeing to maintain it, I think we'll be, we'll be okay as far as the consideration goes. So in summary, it was a very productive discussion, and I think that we are in a much better place and might have a much better handle on the likelihood of this particular relief being granted to us now, so.
Yeah, it was just, it was clear to me after talking to them that they were a little bit confused as to, you're dealing with some people who've never been to the site, they have no idea, you know, what's where or anything else, and they were afraid a truck would back right into a incoming train or something, you know? They just couldn't quite visualize what we were talking about. So that's why I dug out that old plan that the T had, where it shows exactly where we're just doing what the T had intended to do. We're just building the path that they never got around a building because that path had nowhere to go. They took the steps out. And so when I emailed them that plan, he emailed me back around five o'clock tonight, Tom Cox said, "I get, you know, I can, now I see what you're talking about." And so it helped them kind of visualize, because here, they're just hearing words, you know, what are we asking for? And we've been dealing with, the personalities have changed. Bob Levita, who initially, initially was involved with us at the T, is no longer there, and so suddenly new parties have taken over, and they're not familiar with the area or the imagery, so. I think there's a much higher level of degree of understanding, and I.
Yeah. They definitely were asking questions that indicated to me that they didn't, they didn't understand the logistics of our particular site or request. They didn't know that there was that huge concrete wall and the chain link fence, so it was clear. So I spent the time to, you know, sort of educate them over the phone about the site and how it already has the safety mechanisms in place and whatnot. And so, and I think Chris's email was very more demonstrative as to what we were, what our expectations were, so. That having been said.
Can you explain to me again what's in the submittal package?
So in this, they've, they've requested us to have like a narrative of what relief we're looking for, an engineered plan that shows the layout of the bike path and as well as some cross-sections as to how the bike path would be constructed. I'm sure they want to see the typical engineering, but they also wanted sort of not an aerial view, but like an overall view that shows the path, how it connects our, through our site, Country Way, into their train station. So, you know, I explained to them that the path that's there now stops sort of a dead end, but it does loop around to the train station or to the sidewalk, so. That is not something that is, that's easy for us to pull off. I said, "We already have the plans that show it, so that's easy. We just need to probably tweak them to give them a couple of locus-type views, so they understand exactly where our project is in relation to their train station."
The outcome of their review would be what?
The outcome of their review would either be, "No, they won't do it," or, "Yes, they will do it, and then we will negotiate the terms and conditions of an easement." In all likelihood, that would be my understanding. That's the way I put it to them, is that.
And that could take up to 30 days?
Yeah. Yes. Correct. Yeah. So well within the timeframe of ever developing this property, you know, were you to grant the special permit tonight? I mean, we're not talking, they didn't tell me six months, a year. They told me 30 days. We would know, you know, one way or the other.
When I joined Laura and Al Van Gert and Kevin in their discussion the other day, Al was of the opinion that we might just have to ask just for permission to go and do it, nothing more than that. And he suggested taking that tack. And so I brought that up with one of the parties, it was Melissa, and they pointed out that that would require a license. In other words, we want to avoid the complexity of an easement per se, but then you'd have to get the license every time you wanted to go back to do something else. And so, you know, and so they said, "You might as well just go ahead and ask for the easement." And so, but we thought the whole thing could be really short-circuited, say, "Yeah, okay, you can do it. We're glad to have you do it." But it isn't quite that, so we still have to get the easement, so.
Well, I was hoping that the easement was already in place for when they did the initial path to Drew Place, but yet hadn't finished it. But that's not the case. From our, Laura's and both my sort of cursory review of the registry, it doesn't, and I think you talked to DPW, there's no indication that there was ever an easement done for that section to begin with. So we're left with sort of, lack of a better term, starting from scratch in that regard. If there was an easement in place, it may be easy to just amend it or show this as not an overburdening, just, you know, an extension of the, so, but.
Would the easement be in favor of the town? Because it's only town emergency vehicles that are going to be using it, as opposed to in favor of the developer or owner of Fifty Country Way?
I think that the appropriate grantee of the easement would be the town of Situate, and then with maintenance obligation to be allocated towards the developer or the site project.
That was the whole discussion that we had, Bob.
Yeah.
The initial idea was that would be something that would work, but when I talked to Kevin, that didn't sound like anything that was going to work.
Really?
Because the DPW really doesn't want to take on additional maintenance responsibility.
Oh, I see.
Sure.
Sure.
We got Al to sit down with, you know, Al and Kevin and I sat down for about three minutes, and then, you know, because Chris was there, we said, "Well, why don't we all get together?" But our initial meeting with the three of us was to get the three of us on the same page, whatever page that was.
Right.
And it turned out to be that Al, you know, kind of understood where Kevin was coming from.
Yeah, no, I understand now, too. I was only thinking that the town might have better standing in terms of a discussion with the MBTA than a private developer would.
Well, I think that's what they thought, too, but I think having worked through this and worked very hard on it, it sounds like you've reached a very good position to be talking directly with them, and yeah, so.
Oh, there's no question, but I can't in good conscience represent to the board that I had a discussion with them as to being, the private entity being the grantee of the easement. I mean, that may be what they thought, but I didn't bring that up. I always thought that.
Maybe there doesn't even need to be an easement. Maybe it's just.
Maybe they don't.
Write a letter and.
Like Chris said, it could be a permission-type thing. We go on, we make, we do the, you can have certainly a license to construct the path, you know what I mean? Which then it becomes the property of the MBTA and then an obligation to maintain it on our part. You know, we could work it out that way. Sure. I just think because it's a public bike path, that it would make sense for the town to be the grantee, also for liability purposes for the developer.
Except that the town doesn't want anything to do with it at all, so.
Well.
You know, and that's not me speaking, that's, you know, the DPW.
They don't want anything to do with it from the perspective of maintaining it.
Right. Or liability. I mean, there may be other issues, I think, besides maintenance.
I think I asked this before.
Or liability.
I asked this before. Yeah, the current path right now, the one that ends at Drew Place, who is responsible for that?
The MBTA.
The MBTA is responsible.
Right.
And they're responsible for maintenance, and if I'm riding my bike and I fall off it.
They're the ones that you sue.
Okay.
I took some photographs, I wish it was the guy that, that's the path from the end of Ford Place going out. You can see someone is falling, okay? But if you look in the other direction, it looks like, it looks, it looks like that. There's no, there's no way down there. Nothing's been done. So because people are going up Ford Place, someone has plowed the path and they're using it. But there's not much traffic between Ford Place and Drew Place. And so, and there won't be, because who lives on Drew Place? But once we have thirty people living in that building, they're going to want to get on that path. And I hope they don't get to the part, "We're going to maintain the first hundred yards and plow it." I hope someone does something in between. Otherwise, there'll be no way to get from Drew Place to Ford Place because no one touches it. So that's going to be unfortunate, but I would hope that.
Right now, that's the responsibility. What I'm hearing is that's the responsibility of the MBTA.
Well, obviously, it isn't because they, they wouldn't plow one part and not the other part. So the town must have plowed from Ford Place down to Driftway. I mean, the T didn't go up there and do it. They would have done the whole thing, right? I, I don't know. I'm just guessing.
I wouldn't be surprised if people, whoever's the contractor doing it doesn't necessarily know exactly, you know, what, who owns what, where.
Maybe one of the neighbors. Maybe my tenant, the post office did it. I don't know.
Didn't become an MBTA obligation.
Um, I think there could be a whole lot of reasons. I mean, um, one is that initially, there, well, initially.
The bike path to nowhere?
Um, at one point, I mean.
No.
The mitigation for the MBTA wasn't an easy, you know, deal. It took, it took a couple of years to reach agreement among the town and between the town and the T with, with what they were going to get for mitigation.
Right, it looked like they planned to do it, though.
They did. Well, I was part of the program. And they did plan to do this. But unfortunately, um, the steps were never built because it was not accessible, it was my.
They're not accessible, right.
Right. And there was also supposed to be a path that went to the left of Morning Glories that went down to those steps. And that never happened either. So it's, um, my concern here is that this is still sort of floating out there. And I think, I mean, can we approve this as a condition?
I think that's something that you need to decide.
I, I think under this, may I speak? That.
You can speak, but you can't vote.
I'm not, I understand that. I think that this is sort of a moving target. And I, I am concerned about it. And that if it takes thirty days to know for sure and for certain that this is going to happen, is it prudent for the planning board to wait until they have permission granted and so that we have all of our ducks in a row? That's just my thought on it.
I don't mind it being a condition, saying something like we've done a million times before, saying it has to be.
This is exceedingly important.
This is not a change of pipe or a change of driveway with or something like that. This is really, I think the term used was linchpin.
It is, it's a linchpin.
Oh, we always have another bet, we always have another alternative. We could reduce the project by two units and, and not have to provide the, you know, we have two public benefits now, each one with, I assume, two units for the extra four units. And in other words, there, there are other things to do. It doesn't mean the project's going to not happen. And so, you know.
How does that affect the emergency access?
Yeah, I'm going to try and understand how it affects.
Well, I'll tell you what. Uh, I understand fire engines are wherever they want to go. They don't have to go out and knock on someone's door and say, "Can I drive across your yard?" If they've got to get somewhere, they can do it. And so they can drive across that empty field behind Charlie Reynolds. The other good, other great possibility is that.
Not if it's got five feet of snow on it.
They can drive through snow, fire engines.
Not some of the piles I saw. No way.
Someone else told me, if there's a car in the way, going out the way you came in, you move that car. You know, fire engines have a lot of power. But anyway.
If, I guess if the fire chief is on board with that, then.
What, what I would like to see the board do, if you want to know my opinion, is to go through the balance of the art of conditions. And at least we could address those. And if you want to choose to withhold the permit, fine. But at least we don't have to, you know, this is another night, I've got attorneys, engineers, we're all on the payroll. And to just turn around and walk out of here is costing me unfairly a lot of money.
Nobody suggested that. And nobody suggested that we.
Okay. Well, we just, it's been, I thought it was implied that the vote not be, I think we could at least go to work and continue something.
No, I think we're, we're talking about the henchpin. We're talking about the easement.
Okay.
What, whether that could be conditioned, whether it should be conditioned or that.
Well, I think it should be a condition.
Yeah, I think.
And we withdraw the permit if we don't get it.
I also think that it may be helpful if it's an approved condition with our, with negotiations with the MBTA. It's not just speculative. It's will they agree to this, won't they agree to this? This is, look, they made us do this. It's a condition of our permit. We have to negotiate with you guys to get this project into, you know.
They want it built as much as anybody does.
I think special permits are issued with the expectation that they can be built. And I guess I'm not so sure that you.
You're there.
That you're there. And maybe I'm missing something if I am pointing out, but I think you're thirty days away from it.
It, it sounds like everyone's on the same page, unless I'm missing something. If you go through the conditions tonight and you reach agreement on all the conditions, they keep working to get either the no or the yes and you're going to have to negotiate or whatever, that's what they need to do. It's not actually a final, it's not going to be a final vote, you know, you're not going to take a vote until this thirty-day point comes up. And in the meantime, you know, when Chris comes back in after that thirty days, he brings something or other, or I have a conversation with Steve Gard or something. But they don't need to come back just because you're taking the vote. I mean, he can come back by himself. Doesn't that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's where we're headed.
Okay.
So are you, are you satisfied, Laura and Bill, with the wording in condition six that I'm, that I'm looking at?
Not exactly. I mean, I think.
We're going to skip six.
It's going to be skipped, yeah.
And then we're going to go to seven.
Yeah.
Well, didn't you already modify six? I'm not looking at the number, but you already agreed that it would be.
Yeah, but nobody really had the information that they have now. They're really, I think the board's at a different point, your audience at a different point and.
Well, rather than say the permit is void, you said, uh, it would be, what was the language you had last time? Subject to an alternative plan being presented. And that could either be the fire department. In other words, some of you are aware, this property is on the market and there are some interested buyers who also are interested perhaps in Reynolds Place. And it could be that we get together and da-da-da, deal's done and there's, that, that access way you see going out is going to be extended and that's where they're going to have, they have to have an access point through Reynolds Place as well. But we don't know that yet.
But then you come in for a modification to your special permit.
Well, fine, if we do, yeah. But I'm just saying, if someone else comes in with another project, I mean, they'd be, they'd be doing that, right?
Whoever, whatever, whoever, whoever.
By a grantee, yeah, right, right, yeah.
To the extent that, to the extent that you don't have the easement or the right to use, I guess.
I guess, I guess the point I'm making, Bill, is that there seem to be two obstacles here. The T and the pedestrian path and then, and then the question of the public access for emergency vehicles. Both of those are manageable, okay? In the worst-case scenario, if the T says no for the pedestrian path, I'll say, "All right, we'll, we'll forego that public benefit and we'll negotiate a reduction of units, okay?" And in terms of the access, we know that we have alternatives that we can achieve before anything will be built. And we'll have months, nothing's going to be built within a year. And certainly in that time, we can come up, and if we can't come up with it, we've lost a lot of money. We wouldn't build things unless we had an alternative. But, you know, at any rate.
So, so that I'm clear, I'm trying to understand. The board's position is, is that we complete the reading of the remaining conditions of the special permit. There is no vote to be taken tonight. Then in thirty days, we come back or it's submitted to Laura, evidence that this emergency vehicle access over the MBTA property has been achieved. I'm assuming to the satisfaction of the board. I'm not quite sure how you can do that without a public meeting, but nonetheless, let's say that's in. Then you would vote on the conditions as they were read tonight minus condition number six?
Whatever.
Is that what you're saying?
It's sort of similar. I think whatever you, you all get as a response from the MBTA, we, you know, see that, you know, discuss it, hold on to it. It's something that I can pass over to the board. This is what, what they came back and told you. And, I mean, it could be something that I'm going to call them up and just verify it, or it could be something in an email or a letter. I mean, I think we need to be really completely, you know, solid about that. And, you know, that's the missing piece.
So again, if, if we come back in thirty days with evidence that the T has granted us the right to access that portion of their property for emergency vehicles.
At that point, then we will vote condition six. We will establish a condition six.
You will establish it as.
So you'll sit there and say that the emergency access will be over the right-of-way granted to the MBTA based on blah, 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 whatever.
Okay. You have to, you have to.
Still have language in there about if this doesn't work, you have to get an alternative. But at least you'll know that there is some.
But I'm not going to go in with it. This is my first guess and here's my second guess, which I'm not sure what it is.
Okay, so are we on seven? Would you like me to pick up number seven?
Uh, no.
No, we read, we read.
Five?
You've made it up to condition number twenty-one. Twenty-one last time.
Required prior to release of special permit.
Okay, so let's go to twenty-two.
I think you start with required prior to release of special permit. That section involves.
I think Mr. Chairman has said he wants to go to five, so let's go to five.
Follow the chairman's lead, yeah.
You want to reconsider five?
We're going to redo five, or?
Five?
Because number twenty had subsections up to number five, subsection.
Number five, it says the total number of residential dwelling units.
Okay, all right.
Okay. And alls I want to do is sit there and say they will either be rentals or they'll be condos, but they won't be mixed.
Yes.
It just makes it only unhappy.
Does that, pardon me, does that mean that you can't rent a condo?
No, they're either going to be rental units or condo units. And they can either be one or the other.
A condo owner could rent his unit if he chose, but it doesn't mean you couldn't, you know.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Can you say that they, they will be marketed as condominium or rental units?
Well, condominium is simply a, a way to hold title to real estate. It doesn't have any bearing on the use, you know, so.
Now, if you have a condo, you want to rent it, rent it.
Okay.
Alls I want to do is to avoid sitting there saying, "I've got building one or building A is all condos. Building B will be all, you know, residential rental units."
Yeah. We don't have to make that decision tonight. I mean, the whole project could, you know.
And I'm, I'm suggesting is, at this point, I don't care which is which. It's just going to be all of one or all of the other.
Fine, okay.
Why, Bill? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I was wondering that, too.
I think you run into an absolute logistical nightmare because the, the rules of, of having a condo or having a rental unit in terms of affordability, because we're building all of this into it. I think it just adds a level of complexity that's unnecessary.
I think when they go for the approval of those affordable units by the state, they're either going to have to be approved as condominium affordable units or rental affordable units. And they want them the same as all the other units. So you can't just have, "Oh, we're going to make these affordable units rental." You have to have the whole thing like the same.
Okay. I'm, that's fine. I just was curious.
How do you want number five to read?
So that the, they will be marketed as either condominiums or rental? And there shall be no mix or?
I'm not even sure that that.
That doesn't.
Does all units shall either be condominiums or rental units?
Yes, right.
Yes.
That's the cleanest.
But not a, but not a combination of the two?
Okay.
But that doesn't then preclude, I'm just curious, legally, like, let's say they go all condo and someone buys it and wants to rent it. That's okay?
Yeah, we just.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
We, we agree that that's okay.
Just want to, okay.
Okay. That was my trip down memory lane. Now where are we going forward?
And where are we? Which number is that? It's at the bottom of page four.
I thought of page five.
Okay. Twenty-one. Um, the plan shall be updated as discussed. What?
We did twenty?
Yes. I've got markings on it, which we discussed. The fencing was one thing we discussed on twenty and.
On the lighting, yeah.
Lighting, yeah.
Are you ready? Twenty-one. The plan shall be updated as discussed with Greg Morse on March ninth, twenty fifteen. Twenty-two. Funds shall be provided for review of a property owners association agreement or condominium master deed by town council. Required prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Number twenty-three. The final building plans stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the planning department for review for consistency with the elevations and renderings described in condition one. If the plans appear inconsistent, approval by the planning board will be required. The applicant shall provide proof that the special permit was recorded to the planning board along with the plans. Twenty-four. Documentation shall be provided to the planning board in the form of a written agreement signed by both owners of Fifty and Fifty-two Country Way, that the owners of Fifty-two Country Way, presently occupied by Morning Glory's Bakery, agree to, A, the applicant's installation of proposed sidewalk and curb within the access and utility easement near the bakery and on their property; B, striping the driveway; and, C, the ongoing and perpetual maintenance of a manhole and two leech and catch basins in the access and utility easement on their property, initially by the applicant and ultimately by the condominium association or property owners association of Fifty Country Way. Twenty-five. The applicant's plans show the existing eighteen fifty-six George Wetherby House will be preserved by moving it to the front of the lot and incorporating it within building A. The developer shall engage a licensed structural engineer to assess the condition of the house, its suitability for reuse, the feasibility of completing renovations as required by the state building code, while maintaining the exterior facade and torches of the building and of moving these and successfully incorporating them within a new structure as shown. He slash she shall prepare a stamped written report for the planning board on these items with a plan to address significant structural, heating, electrical, plumbing, and/or other systems issues, system issues or required upgrades. He or she may consult an architect or historical, historic preservation professional as needed. The planning board shall have this report reviewed by a qualified structural engineer, architect, and/or historic preservation specialist, who shall serve as their consultant at the applicant's expense. If, in the opinion of the planning board's consultant, these upgrades or issues cannot be addressed, or the house cannot be moved without significant damage, an alternative design for building A shall be submitted to the planning board. This design shall include a facade similar to that of the Wetherby House. This alternative design shall be reviewed by a historic preservation consultant at the applicant's expense, who shall report to the planning board on the appropriateness of the proposed facade relative to size, design, character, and historic period of the building it was intended to replace. The new facade shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference. Twenty-six. The development shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of the water prior to-
Can I go back to twenty-five for a minute? Uh, just some clarification on, uh, you know, there's a lot of consulting going on between this and that. Actually, the, the plan as shown is actually a representative, you know, that's what it's gonna look like. And when you're saying to bring in another architect to consult and decide if that's what it's called, okay, that's what it looks like now, and that's what it'll look like when it's built, whether it's replicated or whether it's the original, uh, building and all that. I'm just wanting, there may be so many duplicates of bringing in external experts that, uh, it's a bit unnecessary, but, uh, I just have to say that.
One or-
Points heard. You heard me, okay.
Twenty-seven. A determination, excuse me. A determination of the adequacy of the existing water services for the proposed use shall be provided to the DPW for their approval prior to scheduling a pre-conference conference, pre-construction conference. Installation of all water mains and upertenses shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW Water Division. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the owner's expense. Twenty-eight. The applicant shall furnish written proof from the MBTA of their approval of all work relating to installing the proposed emergency egress and public access path over MBTA property including grade changes, tree removal, and replacement, and placement of previous pavement and gravel shoulders, and that any easements required by the MBTA for these uses have been obtained, have been obtained prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. How does this differ from number six?
Yeah, and doesn't it also cover like-
Covers a lot of stuff.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't really differ from it actually.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I think we can, we can kind of take that out.
Scratch twenty-eight.
I'd rather you scratch six and left that in. Prior to the pre-construction conference. That's kind of where we were at anyhow. You're gonna give us the time to do that?
I think the problem is the, the timing.
Alright.
Otherwise, it's all good.
Make a note that twenty-eight should be included in, in six to the extent this.
Okay. Understanding that the numbers will change, but I'm not gonna change them now. Uh, twenty-nine. Prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the developer shall contact Janice Lesniak of the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, six one seven five seven three thirteen twenty-seven, to determine the purchase prices or rents of affordable units based on LIP guidelines and discuss other requirements for affordable units as described in condition forty-two below. Thirty. Prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide, the planning shall provide to the planning board, A, copies of the recorded special permit and plans, B, copies of the NPDES permit including its storm water pollution prevention plan, C, a check to cover the cost of inspections by the town's consulting engineer. These shall include at minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations, section nine point two, for the driveway, parking areas, and storm water management systems, and in addition inspection of applicable items in the construction sequencing narrative. The existing drainage system in the driveway, new curbing and retaining walls, the specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on the consulting engineer's estimate shall be subject, so, shall be subject to amendment from time to time and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the planning department. D.
I have to ask, uh, do we live with the same consulting engineer for the rest of our life, or does it change? Is it possible to have a different consulting engineer?
Well, it's, if I may not oversimplify, it's not a popularity contest.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the one who reviews the plans is generally the one who's really the most familiar with the project, so typically that's the one that the board goes with.
Just wanted to ask.
Could I stop just for a second? On twenty-seven, we went by it, I just, just realized this-
Twenty-seven needs to say, uh, water and sewer?
Well, um, that's kind of assumed in number twenty-six that says that the developer, the development-
It does.
Developer shall obtain-
Town sewer prior to-
All approvals for a town sewer, whatever they want for that.
So it just said water, a little more lengthy.
Yeah.
I get it.
We could, okay, well.
Water coming in.
As opposed to coming out. D, a construction schedule including approximate dates for installation of erosion control and other site protection slash stabilization, construction buildings A, B, and C, all applicable items, items in subdivision rules and regulations, nine point one point three, and C, a performance bond to cover the cost of parking, landscaping, walkways, and other amenities, including the emergency egress slash public access path. The amount shall be based on the applicant's contractor's estimates of the cost of these items and shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference.
Let me hold, stop for a second.
Okay.
Let me shift gears. We got a form A from Anderson?
Yeah.
Right? And it's basically just moving a lot line?
Yeah.
I'm wondering whether we need to have Paul here for that?
No.
Mr. Mr. Maravito?
You can go home.
We decided we don't need you.
We decided we really don't need you. We can handle the form A without you.
Well, you don't need me for the form A?
No.
It's all set?
Yeah. You always won. Good night.
You can still charge your client, I think.
You sure? Serious?
Get him coffee and coffee cake in the morning and everything will be fine. Put just something on mine.
I'm all set. What are you saying?
It's a done.
Okay, thank you. Should, should, Joe, were you signing in the morning?
Uh-
No.
I've got a commitment first thing in the morning. I'm not sure what time I'll get down here.
May I?
I'll, I'll make a sincere effort to do it before twelve.
I need it tomorrow on Monday, that's fine.
Okay, Monday, Monday you'll have it for sure.
Okay, alright, I'll come in Monday.
May I continue?
Yep.
Thirty-one. The applicant shall provide a draft condominium master deed or owners agreement to include the owners of the retail office units and residential units. The condominium master deed or owners agreement shall include, A, a statement that the driveway drainage system, sewer, public, and private pedestrian access through the site, landscaping, and other common areas shall be owned by a condominium association or a property owners association, and shall not be maintained by the town. The driveway drainage system, public and private pedestrian access through the site, landscaping, lighting, tree box fillers, stormwater leaching system within the zone A on the bakery property and other common areas shall be inspected, maintained, and repaired by a legally constituted association of the property owners or condominium association. This shall also be stated in a note on the plan. B, a requirement that maintenance of the drainage system, pedestrian walks, parking driveways, emergency egress, and landscaping shall be in accordance with the operation and maintenance plan approved by the planning board's consulting engineer, provisions for snow removal, and maintenance of safe conditions through the winter of all vehicle and pedestrian ways, and description of annual maintenance of the driveway, parking areas, emergency egress, public access path, landscaping, lighting, and other common amenities. C, a requirement that the association maintain an account always containing a minimum of one year's cost for this maintenance. A contractor's estimate of this maintenance and proof of the available funds in this account shall be provided to the planning board with the agreement annually on the first of the year. D, a requirement that the developer notify contractors, builders, and real estate agents that membership in a property owners association or condominium association and a table showing the available parking for each unit are required to be disclosed to all prospective buyers or renters.
Can we include or renters?
Yep.
The developer shall make copies of the condominium master deed or property owners association agreement available to be provided to all prospective purchasers of units in the development.
Just one comment. I, I don't know that you need to say renters.
Right.
Because it won't be the renters who are maintaining it, it will be the landlord.
I am, okay.
Right?
This is about the parking for each unit.
This is about parking spaces for each unit.
So, yeah, you're renting a unit, you know if you get one space or-
Or where the space is.
You don't, we're not gonna have designated spaces. They're gonna know that there are sixty, eight parking spaces out there, and, uh, that's what's there. They're not gonna be assigned.
Well, I think, I think the reason for that was that some units, if they have two bedrooms, make it two spaces.
They get one and a half spaces.
They have spaces. Um, yeah, I don't know what a half a space means, but-
Half a space?
Someone next to the trash container.
Can we go, uh, just a quick note on thirty-one A. The second line down, it says the common area shall be owned by a condo association or property owners association. Um, I, I think that should be controlled. I'm not necessarily, I don't think the condo association necessarily owns the common areas. I would just put controlled.
Yep. D. The town planner shall be added to the town's situated contact information on page one of the construction phase best management practices. F, a requirement that the property owners association or condominium association notify the planning board of the name, address, phone number, and email of the trustees within seven days of their election, and to provide an annual report of their maintenance activities to the planning board by January one of each year. G, a table of the number and general location of parking spaces assigned to each unit. Required prior to the start of construction. Thirty-two. A pre-construction conference shall be held with the applicant, their representatives, their engineer, the site contractors, the town planner, the planning's consulting engineer, and other representatives of the town as the board feels necessary. A list of all contractor contacts, including names and telephone numbers, shall be provided to the planning board and the DPW. At least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the event of an emergency. Thirty-three. The property line between number fifty and number fifty-two countryway and boundary of the limit of clearing shall be marked a flag in the field under the direction of a surveyor and notification given to the town planner and consulting engineer, a minimum of three business days prior to the start of construction. Thirty-four. A stabilized construction entrance as shown on the sedimentation and erosion control plan, sheet five of the proposed mixed-use development plan, must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities on site, including but not limiting to clearing and rubbing. Construction access must be cleared, clearly identified on site with signage appropriate approved by the town planner. Thirty-five. The developer shall request a permit to demolish the existing historic farm and consult with the historic commission to determine whether a demolition, demolition delay will be required. A pre-moving survey shall be completed a minimum of thirty days prior to application for the permits to move. Required during construction. Thirty-six. Construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturday, and shall cease no later than seven PM or Sunday, whichever is earlier. No construction-
Sunset.
Sunset, whichever is earlier.
You said sunset.
You said Sunday.
Hey, what can I say? Ten fifteen. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal holidays.
It's just Sunday.
Thirty-seven. All move, earth-moving disturbance operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures as shown in the sedimentation and erosion control plan, sheet five of the mixed-use development plan, and approved by the town planner on the place. Such control measures shall remain in place until the board's consulting engineer determines after consultation with the town planner that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. Thirty-eight. No parking or unloading of countryway shall be permitted during construction. Construction vehicles shall use the designated construction access. They are not permitted to use the existing access and utility easement during peak morning bakery hours of seven to nine AM. Access to Morning Glory's driveway, parking area, building, and property must be maintained at all times. Thirty-nine. The applicant shall notify the owner of Morning Glory's fifty-two countryway, a minimum of three business days prior to the installation of the curb to be placed within the access and utility easement. This curb installation norm shall not occur before nine AM or up to three days prior to Easter, Valentine's Day, Thanksgiving, or Christmas Day, or any other four holidays defined by the owner of Morning Glory's.
About St. Patrick's Day.
Or a day though.
That's the old day.
Forty. Inspections and observations made according to the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPVP, shall be submitted to the board within forty-eight hours after the inspections. The board reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site weekly during times when required construction inspections are further than one week apart. Forty-one. Construction of the proposed parking and site drainage system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer who shall certify in writing to the planning board at the completion of the project that the parking and drainage system was constructed in accordance with the plan. This certification shall be accompanied by an as-built plans showing all site utilities and grading, signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor and the supervising professional engineer.
You want me to pick up?
Sure, there's one and a half pages left. Go for it.
Required prior to application for building permits. Number forty-two. Prior to applying for a building permit, the applicant shall provide, A, a copy of an executed regulatory agreement between the developer, municipality, and DHCD to ensure long-term affordability. B, the proposed rental or sales price of the affordable units and estimated condominium fee if applicable. C, a draft deed restriction to restrict the rental or subsequent price if a condominium to eighty percent of the area meeting median income according to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, in perpetuity. The draft deed restriction shall be approved by town council and proof of recording provided to the planning board prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit for an affordable unit. D, a plan showing the location of the affordable units for the building and planning departments. E, the name and contact information for agencies, companies, or individuals who will conduct marketing, hold the lottery, and perform monitoring. F, a draft affirmative, uh, marketing plan meeting the guidelines for approval of DHCD. The marketing plan must affirmatively provide outreach to area minority communities to notify them about the availability of the units, and must demonstrate the need for local preference as well as ensure that there will be no discriminatory impacts as a result of using local preference criteria. A maximum of up to seventy percent of the units may be local preference units for those who have a connection to the community as defined by the state under section three dot C of the comprehensive permit guidelines. If, in the opinion of the planning department, the plan does not meet the current requirements of DHCD for inclusion of the affordable units on the subsidized housing inventory, revisions shall be required prior to application for the second building permit. G, any changes to the affordability documents must be approved by the town planner per condition eighteen. Number forty-three. The retaining wall behind building C shall be designed by a structural slash geotechnical engineer. The planning board must provide, be provided a copy of the stamped approved plans prior to any application for, for a foundation or building permit for any unit. Number forty-four. Detail, details of proposed retaining wall with wooden guardrail adjacent to the MBTA right-of-way must be submitted to the town planner for approval prior to any foundation or building permits being obtained for the site. Required prior to issuency, uh, issuance of occupancy permits. Number forty-five. Following review and approval by the planning board, the condominium master deed or owners agreement shall be recorded at the registry of deeds prior to the building department's issuance of an occupancy permit. Proof of recording of the property owners association agreement or condominium master deed must be provided to the planning board. Number forty-six. Prior to issuance of an occupancy permit for building A, a deed restriction shall be recorded requiring the facade of building A to be preserved for a minimum of thirty years. Forty-seven. The emergency egress slash public access path must be constructed prior to occupancy of any building on site. Administration. Number forty-eight. All time periods referenced in this document for completion of conditions shall be told in case any appeals are taken. Number forty-nine. This special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within ninety days of expiration of the appeal period or such extension of that time period granted by the planning board following approval of this special permit. Number fifty. Building A shall be completed within five years of the date of recording of this special permit.
Why is that? Five years? That was just something because the board had a lot of concern about whether it was gonna be built. I think that was one we put on, um-
Building A is the first-
The first one.
The one nearest the street with the historic infrastructure.
Right, that's the one that I think, that I think people were the most concerned about.
And that's building A?
Yeah. I mean, if you don't feel like it has to be in there, take it out.
Well, within five years of the date of recording. Am I missing?
It's, it's very arbitrary, but-
What it is, it puts a stake in the ground.
Outside limit.
An outside limit of when building A will be completed.
Alright. So that, you know, I mean-
I don't wanna walk away from building.
Like with the Riverway, what, what you got?
Yeah. Okay. I understand.
It can always be extended, somebody comes in and asks for an extension.
Thank you.
Number fifty-one. This special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL chapter forty A, section nine.
Dun dun dun. Want me to take this one?
No, I wanna do the last one. Number fifty-two. All plan sheets of the mixed-use development special permit plan shall be recorded- All plan sheets of the mixed-use development special permit plan shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Let me make a suggestion. We've got the language for all of them except for six. Let's make all of the changes in that that we discussed tonight so that we have a document that both sides have and say something on six that says, the easement, the language regarding the specific easement slash use of the right-of-way or whatever, okay, will be determined, to be determined. That way there you've got a clean copy of all of the changes and we've got a clean copy of all the changes. Right now, I think we've got multiple versions out there.
Yeah, I was going to say, what does the applicant have? Do they have the ones that you read?
They got-
Yeah.
I have the one, yeah, we have the ones that you read tonight, but we didn't, I don't think we backfilled the ones from last time. You probably made edits because I noticed you were turning pages when we weren't. So, well, I'm working from the copy that we had from last meeting.
Once you have an edited page, you'll forward it to us.
What Mr. Lindbacher has proposed is fine.
And that'll obviate the problems of which version who has.
Oh, I think now's the time to square away the version that we had.
I think that we've, we haven't solved the lynchpin, but we've made progress.
So do you certify all but six then? Is that like you're going to take a vote of some type?
Once we come back up, we know what the language is six and we vote them all together.
I think we need to continue the public hearing.
Yes, right.
And also check the date for the submission of the decision.
Yeah. So you need thirty days from when? What's your expectation of thirty days for the date?
We don't know, plus thirty days and all.
I just wanted to follow up in my-
Might as well make it the Fourth of July.
We had, we had May fourteenth, which is not really thirty days, so the meeting after that would be May twenty-eighth.
They said thirty to forty-five days.
Forty-five would be May fourteenth, I'm sorry.
Might as well go two months.
No, I-
Whatever.
You want to wait that?
I don't, I really don't care at this point.
Why don't we say May fourteenth and then, because we will likely submit the package next week. That'll give us thirty days, you know, roughly, and we'll try to stay on top of them. Hopefully they'll give us a little bit in advance of that thirty-day window, but I think May fourteenth is realistic.
Okay, so seven-thirty on?
Okay.
So we need something from you and we got a form you can sign and someone needs to make a motion? Oh, yep. Sorry, what?
I was just going to say also just make sure that, the way I understand it is that condition six, the proposal for six, you might need to take to the MBTA, right, to say, no?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
And what, it's continued out to when?
The hearing will be May fourteenth at seven-thirty p.m. The time for filing will be June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you.
I think Richard said something important. For you to give the T a signal that you've approved this condition subject to essentially, they're coming to an agreement, you know, with the parties, it's just a nice statement and it just shows the intent, that, you know, you support it and all of that. It's just, it's nice to have the town showing some degree of support for what we're proposing to give to the town. This is a gift after all. It's a contribution, I mean, that's what it is. It's something we're doing. It's considerable expense and of great benefit to the town, I think, and to the T.
To the extent the letters required, it would come from the planning board.
Yeah, so that's what Richard's suggesting. It's some sort of signal that-
Yeah, I don't know what kind of letter you're looking for. I think, can we cross that bridge when we come to it?
Well, he's just saying, we're going to the T and we're going to be talking about this and it'd be nice to have some affirmation that this is something that the town works and that the planning board is the person to express that support.
Well, if you, you know, didn't get all this, I did have a conversation with Steve today that I had talked to the T yesterday. They said if they want a letter, they want it from the town administrator, that's who they want a letter from.
Okay.
And I think that opens up a lot of process with the selectmen and, you know, if that's the way it has to happen, then that's the way it has to happen, but I don't think anyone's pushing it.
I guess what I, I understand and I saw the emails and went back and forth about the letter from the town and I guess I assumed that meant that the town would be the grantee under the easement. What I think that Chris is trying to get to is that-
No, I didn't assume that at all. I didn't assume that at all. When I talked to Mark, he said that they may want a letter of support from the town.
I wasn't-
For Chris getting the easement, just for doing whatever is going to happen with that property because there was some mitigation in there, there were some trees planted.
What I'm getting at is, is not that actually. What I'm getting at is that I think that the, if the planning board were to send an email to either Tom or Mark, just telling them that the board has considered all of the conditions of the proposal and has essentially required the applicant to achieve safety access off the back of the property, I think that, that's all I'm saying. Like, I'm going to them, telling them, we need this, we have to do this, but I'm just the applicant's attorney. If the planning board says, yes, the board has determined that this is necessary for the completion of this project. I'm not saying you support it or not support it, I'm just saying that-
I've been advised by the town administrator, who's my boss, that I'm not to deal with a state agency. She does that, so I don't want to put myself in an awkward position and I don't want to put the board in an awkward position, particularly where the MBTA said they don't really care about a letter from the planning board. It's a nice thing, you know, maybe they should, you know, write one just to make everybody feel good, but that's not really where we're at, you know, we're in-
That wasn't what I was asking. What I was asking for a notification to the agency that we're dealing with that the board has determined that this is necessary. That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying-
But I already made the phone call, I mean, they know that.
Okay.
You told them that.
So we could follow up with an email, just saying I can, you know, confirm my telephone conversation?
I just don't want to do it.
Right, I can understand where Laura is coming from and I agree with her. However, once the minutes are approved, which shows the intent of the planning board, they become public documents.
Absolutely.
So if you wanted to take the minutes from this meeting and send them off to the T to show that the planning board, because they are a public document, and I think that that might be a solution.
That's a good idea.
It's a very good resolution.
Yeah, I mean, because I was thinking somehow like giving the T this and saying, but yours is much better.
Yeah, if they're interested, those minutes are there, they're on the town website.
Send a video link of this particular broadcast.
That's why I wanted it left in the draft condition so I could show it to them, if this is a requirement.
Or a point of view.
But you can take the minutes and transmit them to them.
All right.
Yeah, so here we are.
We got a motion to continue.
Okay.
Did you read this already?
No.
Okay.
If he did, it was the last meeting.
And just so I'm clear, we don't need to vote, we're holding off. Like, we read all this, but we're just extending the-
Agreed.
Okay. "I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District for 50 Countryway until May fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven-thirty p.m., and to continue the time for action until June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what date did he say, June thirtieth?
Well, that's to file the decision. Oh, to make a decision, sorry, they have to file a decision.
Now, what did I do with the champagne that I brought in the trunk of my car?
Till the fourteenth.
You can drink it, I'll drink it.
No, I'm sorry, you guys didn't hear it.
May fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Yes, yes.
I do want you to know that without an audience, two different people who expressed an interest
in my project had already-
Karen, what was the date for filing the decision, June thirtieth?
...observed the planning board on YouTube discussing this project in detail before even calling me. They wanted some legitimacy out there. So it's an interesting, the people in the public, we go to that resource. There's some of you who heard of that sort of thing. I said, you listened to the whole thing.
They looked at the meeting on table?
Yeah, yeah.
What's today, the twenty-eighth? Twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth?
Still the twenty-sixth.
I have it written right on my paper here, I don't know why I was second guessing myself.
It feels like it's been five days already.
Yeah, is there any discussion on the Form A?
Lot lines, it looks like, yep. Oh, okay, go.
I read, I read, I read. Not that I have any financial gain, I happen to be in a butter with them.
Can you explain, Laura, exactly what's intended by this point?
Yeah, which line it is.
Right.
Only Paul working.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure we're-
I read, and I read, and I read. That's what I mean, I think we moved on here.
Cut across here.
Two and-
One.
And two is over here, three is-
Parcel three, is that the skinny strip along the driveway?
Yeah, parcel three.
Okay. Left.
They're being divided, one and two are going to be combined and three and four are going to be combined. So it's two are going to be combined and three go three and two.
So these two and three and four?
One and two and-
Oh, three's up here.
So that's what we did, we took three off and two before.
So the frontage for-
Parcel one.
Everybody's, everybody's frontage is on some of that.
Three and parcel four. Parcel one and two, one lot, and parcel three and four, one lot.
That's not a legal frontage.
Right here. So this, these folks come in off of, and then these people come in off of Summit. So, and that's what we did before, we took this part off of two, another Form A we did. And then now they're just connecting these two, because I remember going-
They don't even really have to have that.
As Paul explained it to me, and this is anecdotal, it has nothing to do with the legal requirements, the two parties are related, right, who own these adjacent parcels? And the party that wished to basically switch easements and switch access was trying to preserve the view to the marsh from their property in case the other property was subsequently developed by someone not sympathetic, i.e. not related to the party in question.
That's as reasonable as any explanation I've ever heard for why you do something.
But the bottom line here is that they're combining one and two and they're combining three and four and there's no, they meet all the requirements to do.
I move to approve, under the subdivision control law not required, a planned plan in the town of Situate, Massachusetts, twenty-sixth, prepared by Ross Engineering Company Incorporated for applicant Scott Officer A. Gary Anderson dated March third, two thousand and fifteen, as the division of land is not a subdivision because it shows a change in lot line which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I turn the helm back over. Move the chairman window.
Thank you.
Who signs this public?
I will.
Who what?
Can you sign it?
Why can't I sign it?
I don't know. You recuse yourself, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
Yeah, maybe.
I don't think somebody different should sign it, whoever's vice chair or, is it the clerk?
Do you need some more?
You have the chair, vice chair, and clerk who can sign.
Okay, so any of the above.
So when do we need, we need to sign that? Can we sign them now?
You can, yeah.
We got ten other things to do and we got eighteen minutes to get the hell out of here.
Yeah, we got ten other things to do. Most of the ten other things, I think I'll probably wait, but one thing that, unless you don't want them to, but one thing I was going to ask people about was with town meeting, there's a format with reading the report and getting up there. One of the things that I've been thinking about is where some of these articles involve showing people new rules that are applying to accessory dwellings for size, elevated buildings for height. I think you could really explain them much better using PowerPoint. I'm kind of on the cusp of getting some nice illustrations of these things by a company which may charge like, I don't know, twelve hundred, a thousand dollars to do these things, but they're going to be, they're going to be really kind of nice quality, all done up well. There'll be probably several illustrations that we'll get for that of each article, what people's feelings is. I know, I've talked to Bill, he really is not a PowerPoint supporter, but how does everybody, you know, we talked about it, we said, well, we'll kind of vet it with everybody. You know, I think PowerPoint can be kind of a pain, it can be sort of like, oh, God, what is that? But when people are trying to learn what you're doing, I think if you have some pictures up there, it's going to help, but it's up to you, whatever you think.
I think it's valuable as a visual representation as long as you don't try to make a ten-page PowerPoint presentation.
It'd probably be like a six or seven.
If you do one or two, right?
Yeah, one or two.
That's really what I'm thinking.
And the value also is you could print that out and have that be a handout as well.
I think that's actually a better idea.
I do too.
So that people are holding it in front of them and not trying to strain to see a screen and-
Well, I know the time's-
You can refer back to another diagram if they need to rather than, you know, try, you've got to progress through the PowerPoint at some, at some level and once you've progressed, then you can't go back. But if I've got this in front of me, I can flip back if I think I need to.
Are you suggesting a handout, two-sided, one for accessory?
I think a handout would be just as effective, myself.
I agree. I don't like PowerPoints either.
Okay, I mean, I think with the PowerPoint that-
I'm on the other side of fence. I do like them, I think the visuals sitting there is quite useful.
The only thing that I would say, I a hundred percent am back by the power, I back the PowerPoints, however, our facilities at town meeting, usually it's like a tiny little screen, like on the right-hand side or left-hand side, it's not really the most conducive to look at it. Like, if it was gigantic, you know, and it was fifty foot behind the podium, I'd be, ah, this is great. So that's my only concern. But I do think the handouts, doing it is absolutely relevant. We can always print it and I guess-
Or you could do both.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do it.
And go through the-
Printing it, you know, just killing the trees.
You can then make a PowerPoint out of it and print a handouts.
Just, you know, the petitioned article, they're going to have some kind of overhead, you know, like visuals.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind it if it were both. I mean, I just think you need something to hold in your hand if you, if you want, if you want to do it that way, but-
So what's the consensus? To have, to have both or?
I think the handout would be very effective. I agree with Richard that the screens are usually off on the side and hard for most of the people to see. I understand that seeing it will help inform everybody. I'm trying to think how, how- I'm trying to think how, how we can display the accessory dwelling information visually. The building height, obviously, you know, we could say, you know, here's a home, you know, it gets destroyed and now this is how we propose.
I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't do it with actual photographs of actual buildings. I would do it totally with diagrams.
Yeah, exactly. That's how it's gonna be.
We don't want to personalize it.
No, I mean, they're gonna get some plans of some buildings that you've looked at, but they're gonna tweak them so that they're not recognizable.
Oh, I see, okay.
But just to show, for instance, the two connected buildings of, say, one nine hundred square feet, one seven hundred and fifty square feet and what that looks like on the ground and how that, you know, can really look like two very similar houses or like a duplex.
Initial plan for Garden Road.
I think you're only gonna get that really through to people by showing it to people and you're gonna have opposition on that, you know, you know that, so you might as well put yourself in a stronger position as possible and then even if you do lose it, at least people can say, hey, well, they lost, but they did a great job, you know. I mean, seriously.
Yeah, it's about.
If they understand, if they understand and vote the way they want to vote, that's, that's, you know.
Yeah, and they understand it, at least then you know that they understood how they were voting and they didn't get swayed by some emotional argument by somebody that had nothing to do with the issues you were really concerned about.
Yeah, the one advantage to a PowerPoint, thinking about it, is that it will give the speaker who's ever verbally presenting the arguments, something to sort of key on.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have to stand up there and have people look at you, which is, you know.
I think that's, you know, if you think about one of the last ones we had when John Clarkson did his presentation on the water resources, he did a great job and it was only six or seven slides that he went through.
But I think in addition, the handouts are gonna be valuable.
It wouldn't be anywhere beyond that.
And I mean, typically what we do is, like, if this was the PowerPoint slide, right, you don't actually go through and talk about each of these, you've got more information because I'm looking at it, but then you say, well, tonight, we're gonna have a public hearing on the site plan administrative review and then we're going to continue the common driveway and then we're also going to continue the mixed-use special permit and like, but yet it gives people more information behind the scenes if they want. So I guess what I'm advocating is also for both, where, but the person explaining in the PowerPoint wouldn't have to maybe go through all of the detail as much as maybe the handout would have, that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
Motion PowerPoint yes, PowerPoint no.
It would just have to interpret it for people who are looking at it, they may not understand what they're looking at.
You may actually do the other way around and have bullets for the PowerPoint and then fill in the bullets.
That could be too, I'm just, they don't have to be exact, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Whatever it is, I'm hoping to have it by April ninth so we can all look at it and be familiar with it.
What's the consensus aboard PowerPoint?
I think so, yeah.
And handouts.
Well, then, the PowerPoint becomes the handout, the same thing, right?
Yeah.
Now, let's go back to the step before that. We've got three articles, who's gonna present them? Ian has agreed to do accessory dwelling.
What are the other articles?
The other is building height and the third is the change in zoning.
And all you have to do on that is just the report, you don't have to advocate for it at all.
Okay, I'll read that one.
Okay.
The building height, you mean the rebuild for the, we're talking about the.
Yeah, the one with the elevation, that is from the sill to the ridge.
Which I'd like to.
I'll do that one.
What would you like?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm the Assistant Building Commissioner and the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer, so I don't think I should be, you know, weighing.
I'll do the building height one.
It's a little bit of a conflict.
I'm sorry, what was the zoning one again?
What else do we need to do?
They're all zoning.
Well, you said the.
Minutes and manuals.
No, I mean, on the articles.
And the reporter.
Oh, yeah, we'd sort of like you to vote for the reports, just so that.
During the end.
What's another fifteen minutes?
Long fifteen minutes.
We're retired, Billy, you've got nothing to do.
What?
Aren't you retired?
I think tired is the operative.
For all time.
Exactly. I found that today a benefit of me retiring.
Do I need to read them?
No, 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 don't read them, just say that they're as distributed to the Planning Board.
If there's an opening, you can move.
Alright, I move that we approve.
You can take any time.
The articles submitted to town meeting that we have already previously.
Just the reports for the articles, yeah.
Yeah, those are the reports.
The reports for the articles.
That we approve the reports.
In support of the Planning Board's approval of the zoning.
Of the zoning articles.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and then, does someone want to do a motion on the housing plan, because you're really on a roll?
Okay. "I move to approve the town of Situate Housing Production Plan dated March, just is it twenty fifteen? March twenty fifteen, prepared by Karen Sonnerberg, consultant with technical support from Laura Harbottle, town planner."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you got some, some bills?
Bills, bills, bills.
Minutes.
Alright, one at a time. Alright, "I move that we approve ninety-nine dollars and seventy-four cents for mileage, that mileage reimbursement, when Laura went to the.
Went to a bunch of things.
Yeah, EDC consultants is in town or blah, 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 blah.
That was one motion if you want.
Alright, and twenty-five dollars for the reimbursement for Inclusionary Zoning Workshop."
Are there supposed to be three of them?
Do you have more?
The third one I haven't done yet, because that one's buzzier.
And finally, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents to our favorite company, WB Mason.
Who but WB Mason?
For requisition, submittal and approvals and purchase orders.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I can't.
We got minutes. Your name's on there.
Do you want me to sign this? We put all the names on. One big happy family.
We just put reader after.
What is this, just pass it down?
That's one page that's.
Oh, okay.
It goes with that other signature page.
Do we have minutes?
Yep, yes, we do. You want to do a motion?
Sure. Okay, "I move that we approve the minutes, the Situate Planning Board minutes of March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen."
Second.
A second.
Those are the ones that were sent out of email? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright. Gentlemen, there are three we need to sign.
We only need three signatures, so.
So we can actually, Bob's motion? I have Bob's motion, but I have a second.